The mobile says at seven o'clock, you're good to go.
Welcome to the local township board of commissioners stated and advertised hopefully meeting. Tonight is May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Welcome, please stand for the place.
I would like to be to the flag. And it's in the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of all with liberty and justice for all.
To inform the public before we start with our agenda items, the board met an executive session with our solicitor. Prior to this meeting, discuss the personnel matter. This is throughout some ground rules. Public comment can be taken at the front of the room, in front of the podium. Please address the board as as each item on the list. If it's related to each item on our agenda list. Non-agenda items will be taken at the end of this meeting and we'll be glad to. Take your public comment. Welcome, please be respectful. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is review and consider minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty five. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing not, I'll make a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty five minutes. Sorry. Motion has been moved and seconded to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty five minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, thank you. Next is review and consider the May twenty twenty five bill list. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments, concerns regarding the bill list?
Yeah.
Thank you, EJ again. For putting the bill list together for all of us. I'll make a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty five bill list.
So I think.
Motion's been moved and seconded. To approve the May twenty twenty five bill. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you. Motion's passed. Next is review our bond parameters ordinance. I believe it is. There we go.
Perfect time.
Tim Anderson and Ed Murray, I believe, are going to be here this evening.
So gentlemen, if you'd like to, we'll do everything from the podium. So if you want to just run two seats there and rotate your way through. Where did we force you to park? I thought I saw your car go.
Oh, yeah. It's up there somewhere.
Time that's up.
Sorbonne Council is here with us this evening in attendance to deliver. So for me, I'm with the board.
I'm going to first go over the kind of the finance piece. Go through an executive summary, but generally at the end of that piece is is well, your bond council is here to talk about timidity. So we're going to ask you to. Remove a resolution or an ordinance. Under the local government unit debt act to approve. On a parameters basis to the debt or incur the debt at your next meeting in June tenth. June tenth. Yeah, June tenth, correct. So you have the presentation in front of you. First, my name is Ed Murray. I'm from Stiefel. My partner, Mike Wolf, and I have been really fortunate to have. Represented this township and been their underwriters since two thousand and six. It's been almost twenty years. I remember working on the bond issue in two thousand and six for the public works building. Which was some time ago, but. So we're very fortunate that. Two things. This is an executive summary. What we're here to talk to you about is the project itself, and we're assuming that you're ready to proceed with the firehouse project. We're assuming that we're going to go through now. Our job is really, what is the best way for us to come up for you to do that? Right? What is going to be the lowest impact? Easy, sort of budgeted. And there are some things inside of public finance that we can really do that really enhances that. One of those things is the issue, the bonds is bank qualified. And what that does is it says you're going to issue no more than ten million dollars worth of. Debt in any one given year. When you do that, you get more favorable interest rates. Because there's a wider pool of people that want to invest in those bonds. And the bonds become callable in five years. Which means after five years, if interest rates are lower, you'll have the opportunity to refund them and lower your interest cost. As interest rates are a little bit more elevated than they were in twenty two and twenty one. We always want to make sure that you get the lowest possible call feature for that. So. Bank qualified, less than ten million, five-year call. These are all things that we really want to make sure that you're taking advantage of. It'll also give you a portion of the money that you need for the firehouse project. And then we'll come up with a secondary issue. Once you bid fully the project and you have all the final amounts that you'll need. So the second one will be exactly what you need to finish the project. So you'll be as efficient as you possibly can with the issuance of your debt. You won't issue one bond more than you'll need. And you'll know exactly what your costs are before we finish this project off, and you can do that. You'll invest this money during the period of construction, which will be fine, and we'll be working toward that five-year call. This will also give us two or three years to get the full thing budgeted for. So there's a number of different things we're looking for. Budget flexibility, lowest possible cost, lowest possible call feature. So we're thinking about all these things. Now, back in here, we have a timeline as well. We take about six to nine weeks putting together and got the document. We put together and have a rating call. We did that today to reestablish your rating. Your rating has been double A. Plus for a long time, and I don't see that changing. Maybe not, you know. But I didn't, I didn't hear anything in the rating call today. Let me to believe that standard reporters was not as equally as impressed as they have been traditionally about this township. Fund balance, conservative finances, minimum debt. Just excellent financial management for an extended period of time. It's kind of. What they were looking at and what they were giving back to us as far as feedback, just very impressive. That's always the function of a board. It's always the function of an administration. So. To you and the boards before you, I think this township has been really solidly managed. And I think that's what you'll hear when we get the full rating report. We're not expecting that until just before Memorial Day. I'll have that on me when I come in on the tenth, when you consider the final resolution or the final ordinance to incur the debt. And we would expect after that that we will be selling the bonds the week of the twenty third of June. That's the time that we will actually fix the interest rates and know exactly what the debt service is. In this presentation, we've estimated the debt service, and I can show you what that looks like. That's on.
It's real good. June or July?
June.
That's your, that's final.
Week of June, so settlement thirty days later.
Got it.
We'll settle and you'll get the proceeds. D C D takes twenty-five days to review. Bond sale, the bond sale documents, all the documents your bond counsel provides, all the opinions that go with it. They don't finally give us approval for twenty-five days, so we settle about thirty days later. So the money will be in your hands somewhere at the end of July. And we'll work through it on that. The debt service itself, there was on page six. Other presentation, what we're expecting right now. In dark blue. Yeah. In dark blue, you have your existing debt service. And then in light, in light blue, we're expecting the series of twenty-five will be ten million dollars. We expect that service in that first column says estimated N M new money debt service. That's what we think the new debt service will look like. And as you'll see, it's, you know, five hundred thousand. What we're trying to do is, if you look at the the existing debt service. We're paying particular attention and we're trying to, and that's why we call it a wraparound. We're trying to wrap around your existing indebtedness. You see, you have high existing debt service for two more years, and then it drops off. So we're trying to get you out of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget here. We're trying to wrap around that. So we're kind of delaying for just a couple of years. Some of the principal, and then we start paying the principal off.
And real quick, if you don't mind, just for the board's sake and everybody in the room. Through the budget process, through every like fire-related presentation, this is the thing that we've been building to years now. Identifying that the last major bond payment is in twenty twenty-six. Yeah. So when Ed talks about that wraparound. This, this is the thing actually coming to fruition, and we're leveraging the existing debt service millage that collects an amount of money today to pay for today's bonds. That will be able to be used to offset the cost of the new ones. So once we actually have the final payment schedules, I'll do the last iteration of this budget to show what the like the final implication is for those. But this is the exact plan that we've been laying out for the better part of like five, six, seven years.
Yeah, you can see there, your debt service now at eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. We're trying to wrap around, but when we're done this ten million dollar bond issue. On that far column, it's going to be leveled off at eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. You know, so you're going to have twenty-five years of debt service, but it's still going to be at some point less than what you're paying in twenty twenty-five. So Chris says is correct. I mean, from a budget to budget standpoint, once we get through twenty-five and twenty-six, it wraps around and your debt service. You know, on this bond issue will not be as high as your debt service was in twenty-five and twenty-six. So very favorable from a budget to budget sample.
And that's how you keep the millions the same. Yes. And now, keep it in mind, this is bond issue number one. We will need to come back and do a second once we know the exact cost of the the project. To build a new firehouse, but this as the initial seed money from. The land acquisition perspective being able to refund what we have already done. Hire all of the consulting staff that is going to guide us through the construction, all of the pre-construction process and the initial seed money to begin the project. All of that fits within exactly what Ed is talking about.
So on page seven, there's a kind of a schedule, what we're anticipating, and again, I've taken out. Prisoners staff have been really great getting us the information. There's hours and hours and hours worth of information we have to collect for an investor document and go through the investor document. We've got all that together. We had the rating call today. So. On May twenty-third, we'll receive the rating. We'll come back, we'll present the rating to you, we'll show you the investor documents and ask you to consider. I guess for a second time. The borrowing ordinance on the tenth. With closing, again, a week of somewhere, we haven't put it down yet, but the week of July twenty-second, somewhere near twenty-third. We expect the closing to be, you'll have the proceeds of the ownership. So I've said a lot. Now, all that is mechanistically handled through an ordinance, and the ordinance is. Tim's failure, so I'll give the microphone to Tim to kind of walk you through the ordinance just very quickly.
Thank you. Ed Anderson, and we are the bond council for the township, known from Taylor English Lobbo. The ordinance, again, as Ed mentioned, this is the first reading of the ordinance. We would come back on June tenth for the final approval of the ordinance. A few items that would have happened before we look for the final approval is there'll be legal notices that appear in the newspaper previous to. The actual meeting, and then there'll be legal notices afterwards. And that entire package along with that statement. Borrowing base and some financial data items go to the Department of Community Economic Development, as Ed mentioned. And once they receive the full package, they can take twenty, twenty-five days to review it. So that's why we have closing scheduled for thirty days after the final approval. By way of summary, the ordinance authorizes the issuance of up to twelve million in general obligation bonds. As Ed noted, the intention is that this will be ten million dollars or less in order to make a bank qualify, which gives a a better tax rate. Interest rate due to the additional tax benefits relating to it. The bonds have a maximum maturity date relating to the parameters of June one, twenty fifty. And bear interest at a rate not to exceed six percent, but those are the caps. And they're not to be exceeded. We can use different numbers. They seem to be a pretty safe number to use as far as the approval, but the intention is those numbers come in. You know, less than that. The township covenants to include annual debt service for the bonds in its budget. To pay the principal and interest and to take all actions necessary in order to issue the bonds have received toward closing. As well as covenant to comply with all the federal tax law provisions, which again relates to the tax exemption. So that would be the procedure going forward. Again, this is the first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the final ordinance will look very much like this. With any tweaks that we may need, you know, leading up to that period.
But tonight, you're going to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance.
Right.
And basically.
Should I read them all? Since the.
Absolutely. Yeah, I could not. I think what was Tim summarized is correct. You know, it's up to twelve billion dollars. This is a requirement under. The local government unit debt act. Chris is going to prepare a debt statement. There'll be a borrowing base certificate. That all goes and and Tim Shepherd's had through. You do the advertisement.
Correct.
The ordinance, there's different advertising under the local government unit debt act than your normal ordinances. There's a post enactment advertisement, which. You don't really have to do under the first class code, but. D C D and the unit debt act requires that. So. I mean, this is a, and this is a parameters ordinance, which some flexibility in in that to some extent, but. This is required under, like I said, the state law. So tonight is. Questions and then really a vote that authorizes to be advertised.
And again, just to have the words and expectations, like this is the exact thing that I've been describing that would be coming up at each of our last meetings for several months. It follows the exact process of how we have done every prior bond issue, and this is the thing that will. Really move us forward into the next steps of actually building the firehouse after talking about this for more than a decade.
And the one item notable is that even though there's a twelve million dollar maximum parameter. In order to be bank qualified, meaning to get a special tax benefit, in addition to the tax exemption, we cannot exceed the ten million in this year. So to issue a second series of bonds for the fire station project would have to be in a subsequent fiscal year, calendar year.
Which we wouldn't know what our actual cost is until it's bid in late twenty-six, early twenty-seven anyway, so the timing works out perfectly.
The last time we did this was in two thousand and six with the public works building?
No, just one of the examples of, I guess, a project that was involved in our last bond issue was twenty twenty-one. Which I would have guessed was.
It's a refund.
Right, and I would have guessed that was way more recent, but it's actually been four years.
And that was what was out.
So that's, that's, that was actually just refunding. Prior. The last, I guess, construction. Think through projects that we would have done two thousand. What year was the public works? So the two thousand and six.
Public Works was two thousand and six.
And then we had also done a million dollars of new money as part of a twenty-twelve bond issue that helps.
Twenty twelve was a fire truck.
Yep. And then we did another in twenty seventeen that was a refunding as well as. New money that went towards parks and pedestrian project improvements.
In twenty fifteen. We took out the sewer authority and refunded it, so there's no more sewer authority debt. Twenty seventeen was a refunding and then some new money for. Park improvements. And then twenty twenty-one was a pure refunding that saved three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on five million six issued.
And one other item, part of the proceeds of this bond issue will be used to reimburse expenditures already made on the project by the township. And I believe back in December, reimbursement resolution was approved to allow for that. You can go back and and capture that money that's been spent to date. I don't recall what the figures, but.
Give a five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We, we actually, that was very relevant to today's discussion with the auditor. When we were having a moment where looking at twenty twenty-four and we saw the essentially a million dollar deficit from the year. That really is all explained by that one property purchase. All of that money will come back from his bond issue.
That was the one on X bike yesterday that we picked up.
Yes.
And then I know. Like a big aspect of where we're at structured right now is we're, we're in the process of acquiring the last parcel. And then this, we decided to go to that.
Yes.
And then you're, you talked about some of the other steps that would be involved. Like, how quickly would we be kicking those things off? Just to give a sense of like.
Almost immediately. So there's things that can happen concurrently. So yes, the the A and C parcel acquisition is the the next and final acquisition component. At least that would include the cost. Then building out the professional team. Hopefully by next month, we will have. A recommended construction management firm for the board to appoint. So far, the the proposals that I have are, there are several hundred thousand dollars, and they're paid on a monthly basis to to that team. We will also have Tim Woodrow guiding us through the land development and P D S process, so there will be expenses related to that. I also have a proposal from Bowman for the H O P permit, since this will be taking access onto Honeythum Pike. So that will allow that professional team to get moving that we would have unnecessary funds through this bond issue to to meet those monthly payments to all of the consultants. That's.
So Tim, I have a question before I open up the board. What you're saying is with regards, because everybody worries, you know. How much it's going to cost down the line. Residents and whatnot. So you're saying when in twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
When that debt is twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, when that debt's paid off. Then this new debt, so we're going to have two, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Two years, and then when that debt's paid off. This, if the whole amount will lower.
It lowers.
Significantly.
From eight sixty-four to eight hundred and ten.
Yeah.
So eighty-sixty-four to about eight ten. And that's only for this one, so it'll go back up again for the next.
For the next one.
But yeah, it'll be slightly lower, and those are all estimates. Like, those are estimates that say that I gotta, you know, bond market goes up, interest rates go up and down. It's not until the day I sell the bonds. So I believe what I have in there is a conservative estimate, and I believe that's, you know, will happen, if not lower.
Okay.
But if federal policy or federal tax policy or federal tariff policy changes. You know, we'll come back and tell you. Unfortunately, this is, you know, one of the most volatile times I've seen in my marketplace. Usually the municipal marketplace is very, very sleepy. Very slow to move, you know, tax exemption. Tax exempt bond buyers are very sleepy, but this has kind of jolted us a little bit, but I think we've come up with a very conservative estimate for. I think the debt service will look like. But certainly when we get closer, we'll be sending. You know, to the township, to the administration, you know, more updates as we know more. And before we sell bonds. You know, forty-eight hours before and twenty-four hours before, we're going to be doing a whole bunch of scenarios. To show you, this is what we think, this is what we think, and then we sell the bonds on a, on a date and time.
Right.
And then also remember that they're callable within five years. So if these are not the best market parameters that we've ever seen. We'll get to continue adjusting and will do so as we've done with all of our prior bond issues to make sure that we're not paying too much at any year.
So just a. Just I'm thinking through risk, right? Like what you just said, and you know, read the news, right? It's, it is a very volatile time. So today, we're going to vote to advertise, but we still have all of this month to observe and. Theoretically, although I I'd like to get a sense from you, like, there's risk, but low. It seems pretty low that we may have to like adjust our plan.
Well, I think right now, the risk is very. Right? The Federal Reserve is met with federal reserve policies kind of set for the next two or three months. When the Federal Reserve came out of their meeting, they kind of, they make a bunch of announcements, and most of the Fed governors are already estimating. That they'll lower the rates twice this year. So they think they'll lower the federal funds by twice this year. That's the average of their opinion, those who make that decision. So those are already in the marketplace. The expectation that the Fed will cut rates is in the marketplace now. You're getting the advantage of that. So we think right now, this is about as stable as we can get. I don't think interest rates are going to go dramatically higher. Than they are right now. I don't think they're going to go dramatically below. I think this is kind of, we're in a bandwidth because policy is actually right now very stable. Now, if Congress does something to make that stability go away. In in what they're trying to do as far as a federal budget, that could change things. That's kind of, I'd like to get out of the way and get these sold.
Sure.
Before there's, you know, a federal tax policy for the next fiscal year.
And that rate can be locked in any date from June tenth on.
Okay, so I was just gonna put that, so we come back June tenth. You still feel like everything is stable?
Yeah.
We all vote and say, just playing it's all right. We all go say this is fine. From that point on, is is there a way to pull out if something changes in that within those days?
Once we sell the bonds. No, so after the tenth, we're assuming sometime after the tenth.
Yeah.
We're going to sell the bond.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, and you're going to be watching at that point, you're saying, watching every day, making sure you're you're selling at their best time.
Correct.
Okay. So what'll happen is on June tenth, if the ordinance is approved, there's parameters in it states. Can't issue one in twelve million. The interest rates have to be six percent or below. Can't go out, the final maturity can't go out past June first, twenty fifty. And those are the parameters. It doesn't mean there's a purchase contract yet. That's up to you guys to decide when you want to pull the trigger, price. And once pricing occurs, a bond purchase contract is signed, and that's when the rates locked in, and that could be anywhere from June tenth till. June tenth, twenty twenty-six, if you wanted.
Okay. Got it. So those parameters are protections for us.
Correct.
So the parameters would say, if if something crazy happens and it shoots out past six percent, then it effectively null. Nullified.
Correct.
Okay.
This is six percent included taxes out.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a tax exception. It'll be low.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it is.
It's gonna be, okay.
And the reason that six percent is for for purposes of Harrisburg. Each maturity of the bonds has to be at that number lower, so you may have a certain year where the rate would be higher. So what else is all have to have. A maximum to go with the highest number because. You're two or you're.
We never, till we sell the bonds, we don't know whether they're in fall, so we just ask for the. Room. I'm I'm fond of telling people now that, I mean, this will be the highest interest cost, highest interest cost that this thing. Right? Because we know where interest rates are, like Tim said. This isn't like a mortgage. We sell individual maturities. Each maturity has a different rate. And once we get a certain amount down the yield curve, we get the five, six years after. What was the twenty-five-year rate is now going to be the twenty-year rate, or was the one-year, what was the five-year rate will now compare to the one-year rate. The interest rates are even the same. Your bonds become refundable in five to seven years if interest rates are, they don't even have to be lower. Actually, it could be approximately the same. And just because we're not using one rate for the whole thing. But each individual maturity has a different. That's quite frankly, while you don't have any debt that's older than twenty seventeen. Like every five years, even in nominal times, we come back to you and say, we can lower your rates. We lowered the rates in seventeen. We lowered the rates in twenty-one. We lowered the rates in twelve. All those were refunding issues. We're very, very good as soon as interest rates come down. I would expect this is going to be the highest interest cost you're going to see. And these bonds will do nothing but get lower as far as interest costs. By definition.
We appreciate you always being in contact with.
Yeah.
We try. And how you work together with us. Does anyone else on the board have any questions? Yeah. Okay, we'll open this up with a public comment. Would anyone like to address the board or bond council? You can come up to the black table in the middle of the room. Please just state your name and address for the record.
You want me to sit down?
No, whatever you want.
And if anything, just don't move the papers, because if we move the papers, let's follow, we will hear. There we go.
So Laura Calfane, three, two, three, one, Maple Road, and I actually have a slew of questions. I know we have limited time. The very, very basic, I keep hearing fire rescue building, fire rescue building. Is that all this is? Because a couple of years ago, we had consultants come in, do an assessment of all of our buildings. Give us some budget parameters on a sort of overall. Reimagining of our township properties. I thought. The building that was going to be on this parcel was going to be a multi-use building, so has that changed?
So what we're recommending at this time is just a project scope of the fire rescue station. That all of the things that we discussed with that facilities review are all still accurate of the issues we have in this space that the police department has and theirs, that the library has and theirs. But part of that presentation was an estimate of what the total cost would be to build that square footage. And at thirty-seven million dollars, that's just not something that we are ready to recommend.
Right.
Be considered. So for now, what is going to be done in, this is all jumping ahead. We have several steps. We don't even have the architect yet. But what we will design for the new site is going to be a building. That provided that it can actually do so, accommodate future construction on that site. Even potentially develop the stormwater design to be able to accommodate additional square footage on the property. Set ourselves up in a way that. Set ourselves up in a way that there's no decision that is being made that inhibits future decisions for that site. But for now, what we are talking about is just the fire rescue station.
Okay, understood, thank you. Um. So we're doing this work, securing bonds. Is B A doing the same? Are, are they contributing to this construction?
So I know this is going to be challenging, but we need to compartmentalize these things at this point. So this is a more than a decade's long process of Lower Moreland, we need to build a firehouse. Um, if there continues to be a collaboration with Burnath and Borough, that's a concurrent but separate conversation. So that if the, if there is a continued collaboration between the communities, then these payments that we're talking about tonight would have a shared component between the borough. But we need to be prepared as Lower Moreland, in the event that that agreement is not in place anymore, we need to build a firehouse for the services that we have here.
And then, so if it doesn't become a collaboration, would the project scope change?
Uh, I guess the question would be whether or not that bays and space would be necessary from an EMS perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think all of that will reveal as we're both doing the design and having the discussions with the borough and the two fire companies.
So I understand what the ten million dollars is for. Do I understand that because of the way our, I don't know the terminology, so forgive me. The way we've been paying down our current debt. When we bring this on, essentially, the township. Expense towards debt, I suppose, is not changing so much for those couple of years anyway.
So yeah, that, that's the entire premise.
So would that.
Be able to have the same amount of revenue coming. Expenses.
Okay, and it's really.
Specifically budget this, it may change from debt service to the fire tax fund, but it'll just be a matter of looking at the first class code. And the mileage limits that we have as to what makes the most sense and most like transparently of budgeting, but we're. That's exactly how we're viewing this, is being able to have the payments kicking for these bonds at the point that the older ones are primarily paid off.
Right, until we take the rest of the money, until we seek out the rest of the money for the actual construction project, which at this point, do you have even. A budget of.
Preparing for, just for the square footage necessary for the firehouse. We're preparing for fifteen to twenty million dollars, so this issue for ten. But also in the meantime, we've already been collaborating with Representative Against Office, um, there's a funding authorization being put into the budget bill. To help through a RACP grant, offset the funds. So if any of that is successful, if there are any other funding sources that we are able to pursue. That would all be deducted off of what would be necessary for the next bond issue.
Okay.
But there, there's just, there's no world where this is going to cost less for us overall than the initial ten million that is being done. So that's why that ultimately was the recommendation for doing this initial bond issue. Have the money to get all the way to that point and then offset the rest in any way that we can.
Just to clarify, you said fifteen to twenty million, in addition to this ten or all of those, so this is a ten cut from that?
Yes.
So we'd be seeing another five to ten.
Yes.
Understood, thank you. So fifteen and twenty.
No, I get that, it just doesn't seem like enough to me, but, I, I don't know.
We're operating off of a thirty seven million dollar estimate, which was a high end estimate for the total site that, that you had talked about previously. So when we're cutting off half of the building area, that's where we came up with leaving in more than fifty percent as a budget target.
Um, and I suppose, a, a huge endeavor like this, um. Doesn't need to be a referendum in the township, like.
No, this is.
So our, the five boards of, the five members who are here tonight are going to vote, I mean, I, I knew that. We could pass the ordinance and then for some reason the world changes and you decide not to do the project, no harm done. Because all we're doing tonight is voting on presumably.
Advertising.
Advertising, um.
Yeah, the, the premise of the local government unit debt act is this board's authority. As the elected representatives for the community are able to issue this debt as they have done. In every other institution, obligation law in their township history.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, I think you got all my questions, and I just have to do this, it's driving me crazy. You are Sean.
Anyone else?
You didn't vote for me?
I just have a question.
Come on.
I just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Paula Burns, thirty eight ninety five Sheffield Drive. I just have a question, not really for you guys, but you just keep saying about. The money going for Lower Moreland. I thought we already decided Lower Moreland and Burnath and we're going together, we already did a fire truck, what?
Again, asking just that we have to compartmentalize these things.
Okay, so when will this come up? Because to me, it is the same thing. Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone on Zoom? E J, we have any?
No, no one on my screen.
Okay, so as discussed tonight, um. We have an ordinance with, which authorizes the sale and issuance of our township of Lower Moreland General Obligation Bonds Series of twenty twenty five. Uh, in front of us, and it was thoroughly discussed. Are there any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise the bond parameters, ordinance as described this evening.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to advertise the bond parameters ordinance as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, thank you, the motion's passed.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on my agenda is the administration report, Manager Hoffman.
All right, a few additional items to call out this evening, so staying in that general topic, um, just. While I don't have the ability to provide specific details yet, I did speak with Dwayne Hyatt from A and C today. He expressed that Thursday is the deadline that they have where their appraisal will. So once they have that, he needs to run that through A and C's real estate committee, and then they will be in touch with me very shortly, um, expect. Just through this process, if we came in with our raised value, their raised value will likely come in a bit higher. And then it will be up to us to figure out what is a fair number that we can justify within the scope of this project, um, but that is at least. Making progress now with the date in mind, everything I had heard him doing previously was that they should have the report soon, so at least that was committed to today. Um, that, that's, can you just remind us if, if we can't come to a deal for whatever reason, um, we don't, we don't feel like the deal is exactly, what's our route for it from there? So let's, we would then condemn the property?
Correct.
And this is what we discussed, must have been like a little over a year ago, uh, um, authorized to, to pursue that legal path.
Right, understood.
Yeah, absent an agreement, that's the, the alternative, be the backup plan.
And everyone, including A and C, is aware that that is a route?
Yes.
That we could do.
My understanding is that that's a normal process for, for municipal buildings, is that right? Cause I remember us talking about that before, that condemning a property in this manner is. Is the normal process for typically for, for these type of things, if you can't reach an agreement. Right, that's, I mean, that's always a, you know, you can condemn properties or ones of public purpose. You know, then someone else decides what that's for, um, it's a board of you. In every county, and then they would determine the cost, um, I don't know that we've ever gone to a board of you, we've always worked out.
Correct.
Agreements.
Friendly condemnation.
Friendly condemnation. Yeah, there's some, there's some advantage to condemnation also, you do eliminate some of the transfer taxes by doing it that way, so. Um, so we'll see what we hear back from.
And the, the main thing that Dwayne conveyed is that, that, that A and C is not going to. Get in the way of the sale, so they're agreeable to moving the property to us, it's just figuring out the, the details.
Understood, thank you.
Then also in this, as I, I mentioned, uh, construction management proposals, I have the four, um, that we were anticipating receipt of. Chief Showmaker and I have one more meeting this week, that is with kind of a different concept of construction management. Um, almost like a co-star's version of building, building. We're humoring that process, seeing it through, we will be recommending one of the other four proposals, I would expect. Um, but, uh, we aim to bring those back on June tenth, um, so that the next member of our team can be appointed. And then last, uh, just there is an updated info sheet from SEPTA now on our website related to that SEPTA interlocking project. Uh, on the tracks behind Dale Road, so if you have not seen that there yet, that is available for everybody. The work that they had advised was going to be happening in May on a couple of weekends, has already been pushed to the fall. So I think operated on a SEPTA schedule, uh, we shall just wait and see when work actually happens.
Thank you for doing that. I'll accept your report as submitted, does anyone have any other questions? From the board? Not so often, the ringers report. Okay, next is the tax collector's report.
I am Jane Tinsley.
Are you Jane Tinsley?
Yes.
Okay.
Originally scheduled to be at the Phillies game, that has been rained out, um, but suggested that she still take her evening off. So she just asked me to convey on her behalf, uh, that six point one nine million, uh, has been collected at the discount rate. Um, which is eighty seven point eight percent of collections, um, and the main reason for that is that the, uh, payments. Made through mortgage escrows were made at all at the beginning of April, so we have the bulk of our funds to get underway for the year, and that was all that she had.
Okay. I will accept your report as submitted, even in your absence, and thank you for filling in for her, Manager Hoffman. Uh, the next item on my agenda is my liaison report, my positions are the Lower Moreland Township School District. Lower Moreland Township School District, D E I Committee, and Community Events, but I'm gonna flip flop this. Uh, Community Events, I'll go through that, uh, we had a busy April, we had two second grade Klein Road tour. Uh, visits in the morning, uh, the last week of April, and the kids love visiting the township building and the police department. And it was a lovely day, once again, and talk them about their government unit. Uh, next on Earth Day, we also had two events, we teamed up with Lower Moreland High School, uh, Mr. Miles and the Environmental Club. Uh, advisor, Mr. Tomaccio, we had about over twenty five students who came to Lower Moreland Park on the Wee Chief side. And we planted a pollinator garden, Steve, what did you say, say over sixty plants? A hundred planted, it was a great day, it really was, it was beautiful day, the kids loved the project, uh, so the. The, the advisor, Mr. Tomaccio, and it burned, looks beautiful. In the afternoon, on that same day, it was Earth Day, we had our community event. And kids painted birdhouses and, uh, planted native seeds, and we had informational tables, public works, the library. Uh, Township Recreation Program, L N P D, and the township, and we gave out reusable water bottles and straws. And that, they were also a big hit. Um, and. And then finally, we had, uh, our Ridgeview Park Playground, Playground Ribbon Cutting, it was an official opening. We had a large crowd of families, and everybody absolutely loves the new playground, and they're really enjoying that. So for May events, just to mention, the police are having their pop-up police party event on May sixteenth, which is a Friday. From six to eight, and it's gonna be a Lower Moreland Police Parking Lot, so that looks like a whole lot of fun. It's been shared on social media, all our fall events are the Movie Nighters, Stars, the Trunk or Tree, Township Open House. And, uh, H V A has their fall fest scheduled, so we're really working ahead of time. On all these events, and we're looking forward to those. With regard to Lower Moreland Township School District, uh, they had their meeting last month, the same night as our meeting, and, uh. April and May, they continue to work on their budget. Uh, in June will be a final budget, I think that's the most relevant, uh, item. On the, uh, school district, uh, on the school board's agenda, that everyone might wanna take a look at. Um, next is diversity, equity, inclusion, which is excellent in educational committee. Or next, the final meeting is June tenth, we just keep moving along. Now, does anyone have any questions? Thank you, that concludes my agenda items for this evening, next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Mueller. Chair of Communities of the Committee, Commissioner Mueller.
Thank you, President Curtis. The first item on my agenda is review the sketch plan for six fifty seven Red Lion Road. And I, I'd like to invite the applicant, uh, up, and after coming up, I'd just like to remind everybody, we'll follow the same process that we follow. Previous meetings, the applicant for the plan, uh, there'll be questions, uh. Maybe you can work through that, and then I'll go around to each of the different department, um, to give an update on their comments on the plan. And then we'll have a public comment. But again, no vote for, uh, this, this is just a sketch plan, just collect feedback. From the township, the resident, from the various departments, uh, back to the.
Would it even go?
Yeah.
It is not, it is not, I, I have been advised to, to not change between the planning commission and the commissioners, uh, so.
Somebody finally followed it.
I tried. Oh, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And do you have something maybe that you could share, like electronically, that we can throw, cause I'm familiar with it, but the folks in the room.
I have, I do have it.
E J, I'll forward you a plan.
Yeah. I do have a thumb drive.
Maybe just the overview that.
I'll look at the planning commission soon.
All right, try that first.
Try that first. Right, hopefully it's the right thumb drive.
I have a twelve year old at home, I don't know what he put on it.
Thank you.
This is really.
You're going to start with. That's not a real microphone.
Oh, excellent. Uh, so good evening for those that, uh, that don't remember me, I am Rob Lewis from Catherine Stewart. Uh, we are counsel for E from Investments LLC, um, who is the equitable owner of the property at six fifty seven Red Lion Road. Uh, that doesn't ring a bell for anybody, it's right there across the street. Um, the property, I'm just gonna jump right into it and talk a little bit about it, the property is a little less than an acre. Um, the only access, as you can see on the sketch plan, is directly from, uh, Red Lion Road. Uh, there's pretty significant topographical issues that preclude really access from any of the other three sides. Um, the property, uh, is developed, uh, but has been vacant, uh, for quite some time. Uh, the property self is located in the, um, mixed use village commercial zoning district. Uh, but is actually non-conforming, uh, as to many of the current mixed use village commercial regulations. That includes things like building setbacks, which are pushed all the way to the edges, uh, as well as imperious coverage. Um, in the package that went to the commissioners into the township, um, we did include, uh, an updated survey of the property. Um, I don't think you need to pull that up necessarily, there's really no additional information on that. Um, the property, in short, is in desperate need, uh, of renovation and maintenance, I think, um, several. Other proposals have come through over the years, I have seen a number of those proposals. In fact, I believe at least one in twenty seventeen actually got all the way through and was approved. Um, for a proposed renovation of that site, uh, but as you can tell, like, I can buy it every day, nothing has actually been done. Um, I included, um, some photos, if you wanna pull those off, it just gives you a sense kind of of the current state, probably that it hasn't been over there. Um, my client is proposing the complete renovation really of the property. Um, but the intent is to utilize the existing structures and the infrastructure, uh, to the extent possible. Uh, to create a mixed use project. Um, we submitted what you saw on the prior, and so here, these are just a couple of photos, uh, of kind of the existing conditions, so. You can see that the desperate need, not only are the buildings, um, but really everything around it, the landscaping is overgrown, the. Asphalt, uh, needs significant attention, uh, and it really doesn't fit in the community right now. I mean, you've got a lovely home out front that's utilized as an office, and then it's right on the edge of really the village town, like, and. Then you have this sitting back there, and it really doesn't fit, and it really needs to be addressed. Um, as I mentioned, we are proposing to reuse, uh, all the existing structures and to the extent we can, the infrastructure. Uh, the pavement and so forth, um, our sketch plan that we submitted really was to try and get some feedback. Uh, both from the planning commissioner and the commissioners, uh, that has proven to be a useful process, um, with projects I've done. That has proven to be a useful process with projects I've done here and with others that have gone through the township. So that before you dive into all the full engineering, you really get a sense of where we are. And for us, that's both a substantive issue on. The concept, but also a process issue here because you do have a unique situation where it's rehabilitation of existing site as opposed to. Ground up development. So it's just a slightly process and that's important really both in time and in expense. So we submitted that rudimentary sketch and then included with that rudimentary sketch. A conceptual fit out of the buildings and the concept of mixed use is not. Unknown that certainly what we're going to do, but one thing that came up at planning commission was. We put in some potential users right in each of the commercial spaces. And those are the ideas that my client has. Obviously. We don't know exactly what the market will man. When we go through the process, some of those potential concepts and tenants could change. It's going to be market driven. But I know what my client would like to see as the potential user. So I'm gonna just walk through a little bit of that with the commissioners. If you start on the property now screen bottom, right? When you come in. Line road on the left hand side, the first building that you see is kind of that larger warehouse building. That building has a footprint of about twenty eight hundred square feet. But it's two stories, so you have about fifty seven hundred square feet total in that building. Again, we would propose the complete renovation of that building. Particularly the interior exterior, we've included some potential renderings and elevations that would have to be fixed up. And brought up to an aesthetic that everybody hopefully would be happy with. We are proposing some additional deck space and patio space on this screen on the left hand side. The vision is to lease that space to various commercial tenants. We are thinking that there is demand for a fitness use. I'll come back to that in a second. That term had a lot of conversation at the planning commission. Possibly some convenience retail that could actually be part of the fitness use, something like a juice bar associated with the fitness use. Something of that nature. And then either a hair salon or therapeutic type use, something along those lines, something you might see already on Huntington puddle. Massage therapist chiropractor, something small providing that type of service industry. The fitness use, when it came up at the planning commission is worth noting. There's a lot of different concepts. Tim shared with us his entire daily routine. And you know, his going to the juice bars and what he does. But there really are two concepts, right? There are LA fitness type uses. And then there are even something like an orange theory or an individual personal trainer. The space constraints that we have, this is a user that would be more along the lines of a personal trainer. Small studio, could even be yoga, could be there's over at the promenade and you see the stretching studio. It's likely to be a user of that nature, not a. Monthly subscription service where you have a hundred and fifty members and you really can't control. Unfortunately, your ordinance currently doesn't differentiate between those two users. So we simply had allocated that space to a fitness user, but. We are anticipating something more along those lines. And that's important when you get down to talking about parking demand here. A fitness user that has one or two instructors and only a handful of clients is a lot different than a large gym. And that's, that's important to clarify. And that was something that was important to planning commission. Moving towards that second building, which is the bottom left of the plan. That is the former main residence from this site. That building likewise would be completely renovated. And here, the proposal is to convert that building to three one bedroom units on the second floor. And then the first floor, we're anticipating commercial office space. Again. This is at a conceptual level. It's tentative sketch. We are showing it as potentially being divvied up. So many more people have so much less office space, but a lot of people like to have somewhere to go to meet clients. Some people still like to go to the office. So we're anticipating smaller office spaces, but you could end up finding one office tenant that finds this to be an attractive location and wants to lease the whole space. So we've shown it right now is divvied up more of. What you're seeing more work, like work zones or work spaces where you might have a common lobby, but then have several tenants in it. So we're just kind of showing how that space could be divided for that office space. The third and final building, it was also a former residence and that's the only place that we're actually proposing some new construction. Here we would simply take the existing footprint and put an additional floor on the top. Really like two and a half stories when it's all done, but we call it a third floor. This, this structure would primarily consist of one additional residential unit, a larger unit. And then utilizing the first floor, which has the better access for some additional office space to maintain a mixed use. Building there. In total, this proposal would result in four residential dwelling units. And just shy of seventy seven hundred square feet of commercial spaces, so. All in all, not a large facility, but certainly large in in scale for the village. And in large and large for the scale of this property. It's it's a congested property. But we think that we can utilize all those buildings and really make this work and make it an attractive kind of end cap. To what the village is now up and down Huntington Pike. In addition to renovating the buildings, we're, as I said, proposing the much needed substantial renovation of that existing parking lot. Clean up and improve that parking lot, replace asphalt to the extent necessary. And we do believe that there's opportunity to add greening along each of our borders. Certainly along the library side, but also along the side with the bank building. So we do, and likely within the parking lot itself, there's a current island that, again, is in desperate need of attention. But there likely are opportunities to add some greening throughout that parking lot. As I mentioned, we are currently at about ninety percent impervious on this site. The ordinance today would require eighty percent for new construction. We do believe that we're lawfully nonconforming with respect to that. But our goal is to reduce impervious coverage here. We're going to try and get as close to eighty percent as we can. I don't believe we'll get all the way to eighty percent by the time we're done. And that is really you're balancing parking with impervious coverage. But we do believe that that will also provide an opportunity to do some stormwater management. It may simply be stormwater quality and maybe rate control. Tim, I'm sure will dive into that with us in terms of what our opportunities are. But you have a site today that has no stormwater management control at all at ninety percent impervious. And what we're anticipating at the end of this is a reduced impervious with some added stormwater management, which would benefit obviously everybody here. We do expect that, given the occupancies and particularly mixed use, that all the buildings are going to have to be sprinklered. Because of that, we will have to run new utilities. I think that was a consistent theme of the prior plans as well. That will obviously require us to tear up some of the asphalt, so that will give us all more reason to maintain some of that asphalt. As I mentioned, we did provide conceptual tenants for these spaces. One thing that we did do with those conceptual tenants was make sure to do our own ordinance analysis because as the planning commission echoed. It sounds like a lot for a relatively small space. But we did do an ordinance analysis to determine what the parking requirements for those proposed tenants would be. And to make sure that we were providing onsite enough parking per ordinance for all of those tenants. And we do believe that we can do so. The tenants shown on our plan. Range from about thirty one to thirty eight required total parking spaces. And right now we're showing, I believe, thirty six spaces onsite. That will obviously change with a fully engineered plan. We think it may change slightly for the better. We've seen plans that have shown as many as forty one spaces. So we do believe we will certainly meet that range. And what I think is important to note is. You almost have to look at it as more of a shopping center in the sense that you have. A number of parking spaces and that becomes your reverse engineering of your driver for some of your tendencies. We have to meet code. So if we end up having one user, say a hair salon, which parking is based on number of seats, your number of chairs. And if their parking demand is is higher and they. Take a larger allocation of our parking from a code standpoint, we then have to be mindful of that. In terms of leasing our other space and our other space could be confined as to what users could go there. So maybe you can't. Have all of the users that you want, but parking is really a relevant consideration there. So. What we have on the plan, we believe we can comply and we're certainly hoping that that is the kind of tenant mix that we will have here. But as we would move forward, as tenants would change over, we would still be required to demonstrate for each occupancy permit that. Parking, parking by code matches what we would have on site. As I mentioned, we were at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. I have pages of notes from the planning commission. It was very constructive at the planning commission. We've taken that all apart. I've taken. Chris's recommendation and not tried to provide anything new to the commissioners tonight so that we're all reviewing the same plan. So we're here this evening to try and get as much feedback as we can from the commissioners. We are eager to move forward with the project. We certainly think it's a benefit to the community. I hope that. The commissioners will embrace it and that we'll be able to bring it to fruition. Thank you. Thank you.
I would love to. Yeah, and maybe I can take a minute to maybe paraphrase our conversations we had with the planning commission. And I do think that the planning commission in general was very supportive of redevelopment of this property. It's been a blighted component. An important part of town and I think everyone would like to see it developed. And I think the best thing that can happen is to have it redeveloped. The worst thing that can happen is it redeveloped, but too aggressively where we're causing more traffic problems on Red Lion Road. Chad Dixon from Bowman was here. We talked a bit about the stacking of traffic on Red Lion as we approach Huntington Pike. Difficulties in making entering and exiting movements at critical times of the day. And so certainly anything that happens on the property, we'll need to be kind of mindful of that. Pend on improvement of the the traffic congestion that we face today and how potentially we can make some improvements there. Parking was a big topic of conversation. Making sure that we have an efficient parking layout, that that parking, as we maximize parking, we don't diminish the ability. Emergency service vehicles, you know, delivery vans, making sure that we still provide access to the property. For those important other components of operation. We talked about a wide variety of the uses that are shown on the plan. And I think there was some discussion as if some of those uses could work. In total, you know, as as Mr. Lewis pointed out. If this was a personal service gym and there was a juice bar supported it, there was, you know, physical therapy that went along with that. Health component of the building. And so all those spaces were kind of shared by a kind of single. Purpose occupancy, that might be helpful. When trying to divide the building up into so many different facilities. Parking really becomes hard to calculate and kind of making sure that. Just because we have something written in a code, that operationally it still makes sense for the community. I think it was an important component in our discussions for sure. We talked about stormwater, talked about landscaping. When we get to a land development plan, we can go much deeper into those topics. But I think from an engineering perspective, I don't want to steal all Frank's thunder. So maybe that's what kind of we had in mind and was in my letter as far as those uses and discussions.
Or yours. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. So let me begin by saying, when you take a look at this village center and you look at the purpose of it, right? And that's kind of the driving policy of the township. I would say this is a really good project for the township, right? And I think Tim did a really good job in stating that this property is blighted and. Really is in need of some type of attention. And Tim did a good job in summarizing, you know, the planning commission comments, which I think I'll summarize as. Concern about intensity of development. Right? There's a lot going on on this property. It's thirty six thousand square feet, just shy of an acre. And there is existing buildings on that date back to some time that, you know, maybe at that point in time, the intensity of that development. Didn't really impact the surrounding transportation network and and parking and so forth. So that was for me, from the planning standpoint, that was really my focus of discussion about the intensity of what's going on. There is four residential structures or units being proposed, seven thousand square feet of, you know, new commercial development. And that's seven thousand square feet is broken down into, you know, multiple types of uses. So you have my review comments. One other item I'd like to point out, the property zone makes use village center, but it's also in the historic district overlay. Not to say that any of those buildings would fall as historic buildings, but it's something that we we have to look at from the township's perspective. So my first comment, I kind of talked about the purpose statement. I do believe the project fits into the purpose of that zone. And I think it does fall into the policy of the township in terms of land use. We talked about the property being in historic overlay. We'll we'll deal with that, you know, as we progress along. Comment number three really talks about the intensity part of it. I'm gonna say table three dash three point three. I know you don't have that table, but you can refer back to it. Right? It talks about a minimum lot area for proposed residential and other permitted uses. And when you read that section, it says five thousand square feet per use, right? So that's an interpretation that, you know, Ted and Jill will have to work through to make sure that, you know, we're not. Over over developing the property, right? If it's five thousand square feet per unit and then there's square footage for the residential component. Then, you know, we have to take a look at that and make sure that we're not over developing the property. And that was a big discussion that we found with the planning commission. You know, Tim, Tim did a good job talking about parking. You know, that was a major concern. We talked about the gym and applicant did a fair job in explaining that it's not going to be a planned fitness or. That type of gym is going to be more of a personal fitness facility. That parking may not be as much as in demand. You know, we talked about the property being a hundred percent covered, really from the planning perspective, right? This is a great opportunity to green the property, right? Address stormwater management. Kind of bring the property up to modern times in terms of how it feels and functions and how it fits into the community. And I think they're willing, they've talked about that to try and. Reduce that total amount of impervious cover as as much as they can. And that's a really beneficial, you know, improvement for the township. And then from the other, my kind of remaining planning concept, right? We need to talk about is pedestrian mobility, right? There's gonna be a lot of people attending this facility. There is, you know, homes surrounding the property and some of these uses might, you know, entice pedestrian people walking there. And we have to make sure that we get the right pedestrian mobility and right where the sidewalks go and how do they connect? We talked about connecting to the library. We talked about, you know, we talked about that grade difference. How do we make that connection and can it be made? Is it stairs? But again, it's important that, you know, this type of use connects to the community. So people don't have to drive there. They can actually walk there if they want to. Right? Going back to me, that may help with some of the parking concerns that the township has expressed. So. Those are the the main planning items that I wanted to point out to the board. I do have other comments, but I'm not going to get into them. They're more concept comments that we can talk about. Appken and township. But I think from a overall, from a planning point of view, I think this project does fit neatly into what your planning policy is at this point in time.
Commissioner, do you mind if I just ask Tim and Frank your question real quick?
Sure. The, as Rob had indicated, there was a prior final approval, which was the synagogue proposal there. And the home in front six fifty one Red Lion shares access in this driveway as their primary access to their property. And one of the conditions that the board had attached in that approval was. The two property owners figuring out pedestrian access through the front of six fifty one Red Lion. It was a prior order, but I believe that was one of the things that actually prevented that project from happening. So just when we talk about the importance of pedestrian mobility and that access in either direction. I'm sure when Chad Dixon was here for the planning commission, he broadly introduced that we do have the beginnings of a concept. For the Huntington Pike and Red Lion intersection, all of those things working in kind of tandem as part of this land development. Be relevant to consider as it would progress into future projects.
I agree. Yeah, Chad did bring up the fact that there was, you know, again, the beginnings of a. Concept to improve that intersection. Let's not go too far. No design. But the ability to improve the sidewalk on Red Lion Road from this site to Huntington Pike. Maybe gets played out if those intersection improvements are to occur. And certainly the ability to get to the library along Red Lion and working with that property owner is important. Um, the ability, and I think there is an easement that encompasses a subject property. That provides access to the back of the house for parking and get access from by road from Redline Road to the back of that hole. Uh, and so all that was discussed indeed as as part of those. Discussable.
Yeah. Any questions? Or they happen to answer them?
No, I'll say you 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 covered it. Um, I don't know. Uh, Bob, if you want to make any comments or anybody else wants to make any comments, we can step in. Um, I'll open it up now for questions and discussions for the commissioners.
Um, I I have a question. Just related to the 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 mixed use, right? The diverse number of things. Do you guys have experience? Building like. You know, projects like these that contain multiple diverse use residential, commercial, like variety of commercial in a smaller space. I'm just, I'm curious where they might be and and how they how they fare, the tenants.
Alfred, you want to share any of your?
Yes. As far as, I mean, if we have the experience on building those, yes, we do. I mean, uh, most most were third bodies, not for our own. And uh, this will be the first uh mixed use project that we're uh related to. Uh, and as far as, I mean, as your question, I mean, how they work, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they uh, I understood the question, right?
Again, I think what I'm, so like what I'm, one of the questions I was also going to ask is, what was the decision to incorporate residential? Uh, and I ask only because I like, I think about a couple of apartments. On top of what could be like otherwise commercial space. There's people in and out, there's people shopping, there's people doing things. And then if you live there, like, is that a successful? Like mix? Do do, will people look for that apartment and say, this is a valuable place for me to live?
Right. I think I understood the question. Now, I mean, the reason why we choose, I mean, to mix um with residential. Because we were advised that, I mean, it needs to be big since it's a mixed use. And uh, they're they require parking for uh a residential. I mean, it will be way less than a commercial. If we add more commercial to it. I mean, the, I think the parking will be, going to be over. What the parking.
And so you're just worried about the success of the apartments and whether or not they're really truly viable?
Yeah, right. Yeah, like you will spend this time, money, you build this, and then. You have the apartments because people or, you know, and so I was just, I'm just curious if you've built places like this before. And I've seen success in having, in having this this mix of more dense.
Alfredo has the construction experience.
Yeah, I believe, I believe we're not going to have any issues. I mean, uh. We're not going to have empty apartment. We don't want to even, if you look for, you can't find it. So. Uh, I don't think, I don't think that will be a issue though. I mean, as far as, I mean, investment point, I mean, it's, it's a good thing to have.
Sean, sometimes I take a look at these mixed use proposals and compare them against, like Chestnut Hill. So Germantown Avenue and Chestnut Hill has this wide variety of uses, you know, restaurants, apartments, shops.
Yeah.
And obviously, it has established itself. Uh, as a place to go to achieve all of that. And uh, you know, Huntington Pike, I think in our minds is is, we'd like to get to that Chestnut Hill kind of model at some point if we could. Whether we can attract, you know, those kind of tenants and and that kind of vibe of, you know, Germantown Avenue has. I don't know, but um, certainly I think that might be a a lot of what we're thinking about when we're talking about mixed use development combined in commercial retail office. In in this. So kind of homogeneous kind of.
And I'm guessing based on the size, your anticipation would be like one to two tenants and per apartment, right? That like.
It's a one bedroom apartment, so I mean, you can.
A couple.
A couple. Student, um, even BA or. Even uh, you know, the the campus over there across the street.
There's apartments above heritage.
That's what I was going to say. I've been to this property several times. What you guys are proposing is definitely that property is blighted at this time. And if you look at our whole Huntington Pike corridor from Redline. All the way down to basically Mary Anne and that area. You have commercials rising above everywhere in that corner. So it definitely fits well to do in that. And my concern was with you with the number of apartments above. We're talking three up there. And is there high specs on that? I did miss that if there is. For those apartments and would you be limiting the number of occupants in those apartments?
Think three or three of them or one bedroom and one is.
Well, one of, yeah, one of them is three bedroom, which is a separate unit on the, I don't know, the image now will be screen, but I mean, on the smaller.
In the back right building, the smaller of the buildings.
There are numbers.
There's several of them. Yeah, ten of us have all the squares in this building. Ten, nine, ten, one, seven, hundred. So we're talking roughly what, four hundred square feet, three hundred square feet on these units, max size?
Well, maybe a little over that.
No, this is the house.
Maybe just something. The rough numbers here.
Yeah, that's main house second floor. That's how you'd be shopping in this with all one one corridor.
Yes. Like two of them is obviously a studio as you see. And the other one is the only one that has a space for a living room and things like that.
Yeah, a little bit larger than that.
You're very small.
So. Would you be opposed to limiting the number of people per unit and doing a comment on that?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't oppose limiting the the amount of people, but uh.
The two per bedroom or something of that nature.
Pretty much two per bedroom. You can do more than that. I mean, doesn't even. Yeah, I guess. I mean, I guess people can say whatever on the contract. I mean, they might leave in, it might be something different. Never know.
I'm aware of the concern, so I think we've had that conversation elsewhere, so.
Then this one's equalized, right?
Then we get certain, Scott.
One of, one of my, I, I'll jump in here. So, I mean, I I don't want to rehash some of the things that are already considered around parking. Um, but the the. Let me start off by saying, I really like the idea of redevelopment. I like the idea. Uh, I like the concepts that you propose, like some type of industrial or uh, commercial space with apartments. It has a nice. Chestnut Hill, someone said that, a nice Chestnut Hill hill feel. I I really like that. And what I'm struggling with though. And if I, if I didn't see the plans, I would have thought this was like a ten acre site. For anything that we talked about, right? But it's one, it's a little bit less than one acre. And the the other, and and where that, for me, where that kind of. Really hits a a spot, a challenge. Is the narrow driveway that's almost at the corner of Redline and Huntington Pike. And anybody that's traveled that at any time around rush hour, it's it it's pretty bad right there. Um, I know one of the things that came out of the planning commission, there was a question. Around where access, is there access that's obtainable through the back for emergency?
I I don't believe so, Dennis. I mean, just from.
I don't know if you got an answer to that.
Just from the great change, um. I mean, you've got Be Well Cafe behind us. There's a great change there. Um, and then everybody knows the great change to the library and the great change to the other directions. It's, it's really, it is, the property itself is so irregular and so shoehorned in there. There are challenges. And so.
So with with those challenges, and and I don't know if you've considered this, but I know you're trying to reuse the existing buildings that are there and kind of build something up around them. But I, you know, have you looked at? Doing something different with the site with the same feel, the same concept, maybe on a lesser scale? And I don't know if that's viable. Have you, have you considered anything like that? And because I'm. I'm listening to all the things that you're talking about. They sound wonderful, but my concern is it's a tight space. Uh, there's already some challenges that that are already exist. And now we're, you know, in in the commercial spaces, and well, it could be this, it could be that. And I think where, you know, where I'm landing on on some of this is, you know. If we were going to move in more in the direction of what you're proposing, everything that you're proposing, for me, I would feel a lot better if there was more. Concrete plan on what was proposed going in there. And I know that can vary. I know you don't have all the details worked out, but. The challenge is there's a lot of, a lot of what ifs, like, well, maybe this, and if 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 it's a fitness center and they were a beauty salon that takes up five spaces, the next. Tenant is only going to get two spaces because we're going to have to manage it. It just seems very complicated to me for a site that that has already challenges. I like the feel. I like the things that you're proposing. I think it would be wonderful for that space. But I'm just trying to figure out how is this going to work without creating other problems. So I would like to fix the stormwater. I would like to redevelop the property that it looks better. Um, in in that space, but I s- I think it's, I think it's a little bit of a challenge. And and you did mention nonconforming. And I don't know if you got any answers to things that were nonconforming because they were allowed. Passed the nonconforming or things that just happened that were part of. You know, nonconforming that we would have to address because I don't think they would be necessarily grandfathered in.
So I did do um, a review of the township's files. Um, to try and inspect what we could. There was limited amount of material there. Um, and it's probably a conversation I should be having with Mr. Rice. Um, but. My opinion on what I saw, uh, I think we'll do a deeper if you'd like, but uh, is that we would be entitled to maintain those biggest thing nonconformities.
Yeah, that's.
John and I am sure will have.
You guys can talk about, but I I just want to, I didn't want to let that go without.
And again, we are, we're not. You know, pounding our fist on on the podium tonight, saying we're staying at ninety one percent. We are obviously trying to do better than that. Um, but um, we do need to maintain. The existing nonconforming condition to some degree, whether it's the buildings alone or conforming. Um, it to to make redevelopment feasible. And if I can just one moment, I won't, I know I talk a lot, but. I think that, given the site constraints, the narrowness of our frontage. The, how the property fits currently in topography and the other buildings. Ground up redevelopment of this site would have a result that I think the commissioner probably wouldn't like. Uh, because to make that financially feasible, it would have to be more intense than what we're proposing. Um, when you talk about those costs. Um, you know, the cost of that new construction. And and that's my fear. I mean, from our perspective, we've looked at it. Is it feasible to do what what we want to do here and make it work from, you know, from a business perspective while obviously being cognizant of the impact? I think it would be worse if if you had somebody come in here and say, you know what, I'm going to scrape this site and start from scratch. Because now you're going to be subject to all of the current regulations, your setbacks, all of that. You're going to end up with. The need for more intensity to make that work. Um.
Yeah, my my concern, I mean, at the end of the, you know, my biggest concern all this is, it just seems too intense. I mean, that's, that's, that's my first major reaction to it. It just seems very intense with the space that's there. And for the things that are proposed, the traffic coming in and out, whether it's foot traffic, car traffic. Five o'clock, can't even get any, barely get out of our lot here. At that time, let alone something that's almost right across the street. That's, it just seems really intense, so.
I I agree. And and if I can, Dennis, part of, I think, the challenge with a mixed use district, right, is balancing the residential with the commercial. Um, as Alfredo pointed out. Maybe there's potential to increase the amount of residential at the cost of commercial. You know, in this space. I don't know if we could reallocate some of that space, which should reduce some of that intensity. I don't know if that's something that your gut reaction is, yes, that's better. Or no, we'd rather see more of the commercial. So um, that's at least something for you to think about and maybe pass yourself.
For me, the biggest challenge is is traffic in and out. So residential, you know, seems better from from that standpoint alone. In that, you know, it reduces the the impact to that that intersection. Um, so that that's my, you know, that's my first reaction, but the the commercial space that's proposed and the amount of. Just the balance there. It's just, it's a lot going on and it seems like a lot of. You know, aspirations rather than the plan. I I don't want to take up all the time. So I don't know if anybody else in the board has time to.
I have a question. Uh, the commercial, first of all, I mean, this looks beautiful and everybody would like to put that aside, clean up. Because it really isn't clean when you drive by. Um. It it really is, um, it really is. Retractive right now. So you have commercial spaces on both, I guess, the second house and the main house in the back.
Correct.
So how, I I mean, I see it looks like the warehouse. It looks like you have a stairs up. So I guess if you have the business used on the bottom, the residents can do. Is that?
The warehouse is is all commercial.
All commercial, okay.
Residential would only be in the rear two buildings.
So the the rear two buildings, will they have a separate entrance or will they be going through the commercial to get up to?
They're separate buildings.
They're separate.
I know they're separate buildings. I mean, a separate entrance so that they don't have to.
Oh, residential, I mean, on the second building as far as residential and commercial?
Yeah, you have the, you have the, the residential on the top and the upstairs on the first floor. So is it a separate entrance? How?
Yeah, the way, I mean, if you see the plan, I mean, there's a set of stairs. I mean, if you can see it in uh, as far as on the second floor of the plan. You're going to see a set of stairs, which is a uh. It starts from the bottom floor and uh, it goes up to the second floor. So it's a separate entrance. I mean, if you're facing the building on the left side. So residents, I mean, for those, if we can call apartments, I mean, uh, you'll use that entrance. It's an entrance right next to each other, but I mean, it's a different entrance. So it's a separate entrance, yes.
And the, and the the commercial spaces on both of those buildings, I mean. Do you have any idea of? Who will be, you know, occupying them?
The commercial spaces? Well, it was intended, I mean, or at least, I mean, uh, as uh, Rob mentioned earlier. I mean, uh, uh, it's just a proposal, what we think will be a fit. I mean, uh, reality could be different after we advertise, we might have some, something different. But I mean, on that bigger building, I mean, uh, I call the the bigger house. I mean, I don't know how it's.
Warehouse?
Not the warehouse.
Main house.
The main house, yeah. I call the main house. So on the main house, I mean, we were trying to use as far as. And a beauty related type of thing, some sort of a botox application, I mean, uh, uh. A facial, I mean, skincare, these kind of uh. I mean, make it the entire section and entire building, if it can be separate. I mean, for massage, I mean, things like that, beauty side of it.
Well, I like the idea of bringing commercial in, obviously, but it's, there's a lot of different uses. You have the residential, the commercial. As Dennis uh expressed. Um, there's a lot going on in this property. My cons- my other concern is. Um, in the back where the where the houses are. These here, I mean, the topography and, you know, fire safety perspective. I mean, you can, God forbid. Uh, if the fire company has to come in, they can come from the, you know, the library side. Uh, but the back, there's, there's no way. Like, you know. To see the back of these buildings or to access them, isn't that, that's up against the um.
Be Well Cafe.
The Be Well Cafe. So that's already tight. Um, that's a concern of mine. Um, but I mean, you're going to, this one, you haven't really got it.
Actually, the um, the back of the warehouse. I mean, belongs to the uh, the, yeah, it's in a property belongs to the bank and there is a driveway, long driveway they go across all the way up. And then, I mean.
The na- main and the second house.
Yes, in the main, in the main, I mean, it goes right next to those dumpsters. I mean, uh, behind Be Well. I mean, uh. Part of the, quite, quite a little space there, yeah.
Uh, part of a preliminary plan review would be a much more in-depth analysis from Chief Joe Maker and Mark Marshall Charlie. To address those specifics.
And you did mention that you're going to sprinkle all of them. We are anticipating that we will be required to sprinkle all of them.
Okay. Well, that's a plus.
Yeah, and it's partially, you know, if you had three, three hundred sixty degree access around the buildings. You might have a different conversation, but because of the physical constraints, you need to do everything you can so that the fire company has adequate time.
Right. Just a question.
Sure.
So there's this here. What's behind there? Looks like school buses?
Yes.
Can you take that building down so you can get access? Uh, I mean, you can redevelop the site differently, but. You know, that building seems to be the building that's blocking.
Uh, I do think that there's, there's also significant topography there as well down, down to the bus.
You won't be able to, John, I believe that's my.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the school buses there. There's some. Uh, there's got to be a parking lot back there.
Is everyone eight and a half?
Well.
Super steep driveway.
Well, you can get a fire truck down once.
Not getting it out.
Don't worry about that later.
Yeah, just so, let's just keep it moving along a little bit. So.
Appreciate it.
Denise, any more comments?
Like I said, I like the concept. I love the way it, the way it looks. I mean, what you showed us, I do think, I agree with Dennis. I mean, this beautiful from that to this. Um, that I do think it's a lot. Going on the site, I mean, the the commercial space, you're not thinking of any WeWork space or anything like that, are you? Or again, like permanent.
It, the concept is to have office space. What exactly those office tenants are, could be my office. I I don't know, you know, if I'm just sitting there.
Attorney's, architect, professional office.
Professional offices are a possibility there.
And whatever you wind off, you sure spoke about was the parking requirements. That's what all. Complied. I counted thirty six. Three times, I think that's right. You're between thirty six and thirty eight. So I mean, that would, whatever the use is, would dictate the parking and um. And the traffic. and the traffic. And the ingress and egress.
Commissioner Hayes, which I can all you have any final comments?
Nothing.
I think it's tossed it all. Any comments from the public?
Say one thing.
No, nothing. Take your name.
Al was looking at ten twenty-two twin silent link.
If you have those garages there and you rent it to a roofing company or a construction company, imagine they're gonna be out there at seven o'clock in the morning loading their trucks and making noise for all these residents that are in that area. I don't think it's gonna go down. I think the type, this spot is very tight.
I don't think that a roofing contractor, um, is a permitted use in this district any longer.
Okay, or it could even be, even a, even a home, home improvement person or somebody that rents out those garages. They're loading up in the morning, they're bringing their trucks up. It doesn't matter what kind, something construction in that area.
I don't believe contractors like you.
Did you see the new rendering? They're getting over, they're getting rid of the garages.
They're getting, they're getting rid of the garage?
It looks like this.
Yeah, it looks good. Yeah.
All right. Getting rid of the garage, so.
Are there any other comments from the public or, uh, nobody wants to? All right, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, I know where to go from you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on my agenda. Uh, review, consider is, uh, reviewing preliminary final plan for Forest Hill Cemetery and they asked, uh, Woodrow, would you like to walk us through?
Sure, although I think the engineer for the cemetery is here with us.
And you don't mind, uh, stick with your name and.
Uh, good afternoon, board, uh, good evening. Uh, sorry, that was not a train earlier, that was my phone. Um, I also have, I'm Pat Foley with Brownington Burnick Engineers. Uh, we present the client Scott Lad, SCI Resources. Uh, Scott is also joining us, uh, via Zoom, uh, as well. Uh, what we have, uh, the preliminary, uh, final land development project known as Terrace Gardens at Forest Hills. It's, um, to develop a, uh, portion of the, um, I would say, uh, not utilized space for the cemetery purposes on the south side of the, uh, parcels. Uh, currently, the Forest Hill Cemetery, uh, occupies two parcels. Uh, one of those is where the funeral home is. Uh, that's approximately nine and a half acres. Uh, the larger parcel where majority of the cemetery is, is over a hundred fifty acres. Uh, this application, um, is proposing development on both of those parcels. So our, our application included both parcels here. Uh, the Forest Hill Cemetery is zoned as SP, uh, Pro Special Purpose Park Recreation Open Space. The existing use is cemetery, uh, the proposed use, there's no change in the proposed use. Uh, we're proposing approximately seven hundred and eight, uh, additional lots on the south side uh, of the parcel. Uh, in front of you, here is a rendering, uh, really not rendering, a, uh, image overlay on the aerial photo depicting those, uh, proposed parts, um, cemetery plots. Uh, there's two, two different types of, uh, plots here. Uh, there is a proposed, uh, sidewalk as well as a small retaining wall, uh, in, in different sized lots, uh, sitting to the, to the north adjacent to the sem, adjacent to the funeral home. And, uh, there's gonna be a sidewalk that connects to the funeral home side party.
Uh, sidewalk from where? Byberry Road or?
No, sidewalk that actually just is an internal that connects right into the parking lot of the funeral home.
So not extending out?
Not extending out, not to Byberry.
EJ, can you zoom in a little bit more on that if possible? If not, don't worry. And you can just center on Byberry Road?
Yeah.
Just so everybody has a clear picture on that.
So, so, yeah, so as discussed, what we were, were proposing is, uh, seven hundred and eight lots. Uh, with this, uh, development includes a new concrete sidewalk, a little like access ADA ramp to the parking lot. A, a small, um, retaining wall along the sidewalk as well. Uh, there's gonna be irrigation and drainage piping, uh, within that vicinity too. Uh, we are proposing stormwater management. Our proposed limited disturbance is over an acre, so we'll be required to get an MPDS permit. As part of our, uh, submission to the township, uh, we did include the stormwater management reports. And we had very minimal comments regarding our stormwater management approach. Uh, what we are proposing for stormwater is more or less, uh, seepage pits as well as, uh, amended soils. Uh, not located where the burial sites will be located. Uh, we, we appeared before the planning commission, uh, late last summer. Uh, part of that discussion uh, that was brought up, um, by Mr. Woodrow and the planning commission, uh, that needed additional conversations, and that's why we're here tonight. Is to talk about one of our waivers is regarding the right-of-way requirements. Uh, Byberry Road is, uh, classified as an arterial, a hundred twenty-foot wide right-of-way. Um, is required for the, uh, solid, uh, code. Uh, what we're proposing here is to, uh, locate the burials within twenty-four feet of the center line, uh, of Byberry Road. Um, the larger image that was shown, uh, that, uh, our ser, the surveyor went back out, we provided an extra exhibit to exhibit, to depict where those, uh, current burials are and what their dimensions are from the center line of Byberry Road, uh, so we can have that discussion tonight. So, uh, the closest is, uh, thirty-three feet. Uh, that's, that's more or less located, uh, to the west of our, our proposed location on the west of the funeral home area.
Are these pre-existing sites that are already there?
No, these are all proposed sites here. Okay.
Where's the closest existing right now? Not in this area at all, but up towards?
Uh, can you go to the other, um, exhibit that you had up just earlier? Maybe go back to the beginning of the present.
Is there even that top? Top.
Top left, yeah. So if you could zoom in on the top left location. Uh, the, you can see the, the non-forested area. Those are the most recent, um, burial plots that are located. And, and those are approximately thirty-three feet from the center line.
So right now, they've already been opened and filled, correct? There's bodies in those sites that are within that right-of-way of the sixty feet.
Yes.
Mark? A comparatively small area to what is being proposed as part of the new.
I got you, but. Go ahead.
I have a quick question. So is this twenty-four feet from the new, uh, seven hundred and eight additional lots? Will that be closer to the center line or further back?
Well, the twenty-four feet is gonna be right now closer to it. What, what we, what we were positioning, um, how these were lined up was, was to get to the, current to the legal right-of-way, um, existing right-of-way. Uh, is how these were positioned. So if you could zoom up, scale up a little. So our closest are the diagonal, um, lots right along the, you know, along the southwest side are those closest spots, um, you know, for, for what we're proposing here.
Mm-hmm. Well, that have it, the impact of, how that affect, impact the trees that, that currently lying?
The, the, those trees would be removed that are located within that area as part of the, um, natural features, resource requirements. Uh, we are the, within the limits of proposed tree removal, uh, including previously removed trees. Uh, so we did, you know, in our resubmission to, to Mr. Woodrow, we would, we would provide those calculations to show that.
Would you be adding in additional trees anywhere else through?
There, there has been discussions on providing additional, you can say, street trees adjacent to these, adjacent to these, um, cemetery line, uh, you know, to these proposed lots. Um, as, as you're familiar with Byberry in this stretch of Byberry, uh, there is a significant grade change between the existing cartway and up to that area. Uh, we would be more or less, these proposed grave locations are still sitting closer to that top of that hill. Um, however, we're still maintaining the existing slope of that existing area too.
These would be graves like that. People in the ground, non-mazel land graves.
Correct.
Yes. So Commissioner, do you mind if I jump in a second just to maybe ask Tim to, for, we have a very specific question for the board tonight. Much of the rest of this would be if this proceeds into the, the, the land development. So getting to the right-of-way question and what is required of the ultimate through the land development process. So in that top quadrant, through a prior project that was not a land development, they encroached into what now will be an open right-of-way, and there are grave sites that are thirty-three feet from center line of Byberry. That is a relatively small component of this project compared to what they're proposing now. The bottom two, all of the sites at the bottom almost are entirely within that ultimate right-of-way area, which the SADO ordinance would require be offered for dedication to the township. So Tim, can you bring just the, the direct question that we were trying to get answered?
So the question we pose for the board is that, is there ever in your mind, ten years from now, thirty years from now, forty years from now, a need to widen through Byberry? The answer is yes, we can widen ultimately.
So I'm gonna go first on this one. Yes. We're gonna widen Byberry at some point. This is absolutely too close to the roadway as is, and there is no way I would ever vote for this project.
I feel the same too.
I'm in the same space.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it seems like doing that is necessary for a lot of reasons, if, if one likes to improve the safety of that road.
And, and topographically, really what we're facing, as, as you approach Buck Road, the elevation of Byberry and elevation of the cemetery are pretty consistent. As you get over the crest of hill down toward the Mazelot and the funeral hall, yeah, obviously there is a great cut. And so if Penda, whatever to widen Byberry Road, they would need to move that hillside back, lay the slope over. And all of those graves that are shown would have to be exhumed in conjunction with the Penda project. That would be a very difficult.
Is that something that even Penda would have authority to determine?
That Penda has moved graves in the past, yeah, but it is a whole, maybe it's not a tissue.
Yeah, my feelings on this are, you know, Byberry Road is a, is a challenging road through our township. Um, we know that, you know, it's, it's a road that, you know, has existed for a long time. And I could foresee in the future that there would be some additional work on that road and, and this would not make me comfortable at this point in time to encroach in that space, knowing that there could be some future development. So I, I would not be in good.
I mean, with the, right now, we did reach out to Penda, um, as we were gearing up to, to talk to the planning commission. We currently don't have any plans, of course, to widen the road, and I understand your position as well. Um, but from a widening of Byberry Road, if, if we said we're gonna widen it to to four lanes of traffic, two lanes traffic each, we're at forty-four feet cartway, we could add another, you know, ten to fifteen feet on either side. Um, for, you know, for, for, um, the sidewalk area. So I'm just looking at, you know, a, a minimum as, as right now, a total dedication of sixty feet wide, um, really does not make the project feasible at this point. Uh, and so, you know, with Scott on, on the phone as well, um, so with, with that full sixty feet, you know, the, the project's not feasible to just strike out all those extra spaces.
So you're saying you need the full sixty to make this work?
We don't need the full sixty. We're looking at, you know, if, if we went and established it to be a thirty feet additional from the center line or a forty feet, that, that's a, that would be a discussion with, with Scott to be able to see how many, we know how many that we would have to remove.
So we're expanding from sixty to twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Right now, then when you go to a twenty-four, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And anything?
But if we were to go to two lanes in each direction, let's say thirty, forty years, plus shoulder spaces, what's that width we need?
Well, so the, you know, the, the center lane typically for Penda is a ten-foot wide lane. The lane against the curb is definitely fourteen feet wide.
Hmm.
So forty-eight right there, plus shoulders. Plus shoulders, plus the grade transition, right?
Plus the surface.
Uh, between whatever the road surface is, and that's right, as you lay that slope back, um, you know, the grave sites would be in that.
So we would need the sixty feet there, uh, to do that project.
Where, where the grade change is so significant between the, the Byberry Road, I, I think we do.
But from a, from a grading element too, is you could introduce retaining walls along that edge as well. Um, to navigate it, to, to bring that additional, you could say, you know, shoulder area down to a more, you know, manageable as, as we, we've discussed, you know, a hundred and twenty feet, and we've only talked about maybe two feet, you know, two lanes in either direction. You, you know, we have, you know, twenty-eight feet of, of cartway. And then you would have, you know, of that thirty-two feet would be shoulder. You know, with the sixty-foot wide right-of-way, so. So that's why we're, we're here discussing the, the various red line, you know, color lines. You can see, we just put some options here so that our client could look at how many, how many, you know, estates would be lost if, if we came to establishing either a buffer of thirty feet from the center line, forty feet from the center line, fifty feet from the center line. As we locate it, you know, we already have, you know, grave sites within, you know, you know, thirty, close to thirty feet, plus center line.
So ultimately, if, I think the board has made its position relatively clear, then the ball would be in the applicant's court to advise us how you would look. And based off of that, the board could then, uh, request that Solicitor Rice prepare whatever resolution would be necessary, either to approve or deny, whatever it would be, based off of what they choose to do next with this feedback report. Based on, based on, you know, everything that's been said already and, you know, my concerns about Byberry Road in general, I'm not interested in any exceptions to this.
I can, yeah. I do also.
I, I would just see if, uh, we could unmute Scott to see if he has anything that he would like to add.
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, members of the board. My ask would simply be that we're not imposing further restriction on top of where our closest existing grave spaces are. Um, as the owner and operator of five hundred cemeteries across the United States, we found that whatever authority it may be, state, municipal, federal, are, are typically very hesitant and, and shade to the, the side of trying not to exhume graves. So our ask is simply that, that we're allowed to develop to the point where we already have existing graves, and that's that thirty-three-foot setback. Um, or thirty-three-foot right-of-way. Um, so really, I think at the end of the day, that was, that was the crux of the point of, of appearing before you today and would, would hope that we could find a way to make this a viable project for us. As Pat mentioned previously, if we're enforcing the ultimate legal right-of-way, um, we, we do not, in our opinion, have a viable project. And believe that if we were to encroach no further than where we already have existing burial spaces, um, which, which went through all necessary processes with the township to develop those spaces, that we would be in no way infringing any further upon what already exists.
I appreciate the ask, but I, I'm not, you know, because there's an existing thing there doesn't mean that I'm willing to further, further existing, you know, further problems down the line, so I'm still hard then.
I agree.
There's one thing I won't want to do is exhume graves, graves in the future, so I really am not in favor of this also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on my, on my agenda is to review and consider, uh. Was there any comments, sorry, was there any comments in the public? For, if anyone's here. Next item on my agenda is review and consider the planning commission appointments. And before I, I make some motions, I just want to describe the process that we went through. Uh, like we've done previously. Uh, we had asked that there was interest, uh, from the township from various boards. Uh, if they would be interested in serving on the planning commission, there were three individuals that were. Uh, coming due for either reappointment or replacement. And we had a number of interviews, and there were some very good discussions. Ultimately, as, as a group, we decided on, uh, the candidates that are proposed. So I'd like to make a motion, there'll be three motions. Or resolutions for Ward Two, Ward Three, and at large, and these are existing members of the board. So it's Virginia Overberger, Andy Frey, and David Rubin. Is there any questions or further discussion from? Uh, so I'd like to make a motion for resolution number twenty-five dash ten for Ward Two. And I believe that is Virginia, uh, Overberger. Pronouncing that wrong, Berger, Berger.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-five-ten. Uh, appointing Virginia Overberger for, for Ward Two Planning Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, commissioners.
I'd like to make a motion for resolution number twenty-five dash eleven for Ward Three Planning Commission, appointing Andy Frey. Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to appoint Andy Frey, Ward Three Planning Commission by resolution number twenty-five-eleven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I haven't heard. Thank you, commissioners.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twelve, or make a motion for resolution twenty-five dash twelve. For at-large planning commission appointment of David Rubin.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty-five-twelve, appointing David Rubin for, is at-large planning commission. Remember, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I haven't heard. Thank you, commissioners.
That concludes the planning commission statements. Uh, there, uh, Jill, would you like to give the building officials support?
This month, we had sixty-three permits, a hundred and thirty-three inspections. We were court four times. Uh, we had a bunch of site meetings, we had a staff meeting, and we had, we had two classes. One was a virtual floodplain class, and the other one was utility emergency class.
Thank you. Uh, the last item is my liaison report. We talked about planning commission and the. Uh, Pennyback and Flashville Restoration Trust did not meet this past month, and next meeting is in June. That concludes my agenda items.
Thank you, Commissioner Mill. Our next chair recognizes Commissioner Plant and Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, President Kurtz. Uh, the first item on my agenda is to, uh, review and consider traffic-related ordinances. Uh, in fact, uh, we will not be discussing this, uh, this evening. Uh, we did not get the advertisement out, uh, as discussed last month, and so we will move this to June to allow them to advertise at the effective amount of time. Uh, so I'll move on to my, uh, second item. Uh, this is a possible zoning amendment for smoke shops. So, uh, we actually have planner, uh, Frank, uh. Levnikov?
Levnikov.
Levnikov. Um, Frank's here, he prepared some attached notes to, uh, propose a change to where smoke shops are permitted in the township. Um, actually, I can come up and help facilitate the conversation with all of us, uh, to understand, uh, what you're proposing.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna try and keep this as short as Jill's report. But, so, um, right, the township adopted the zoning ordinance, uh, I think, Chris, it goes back to the or.
April twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, right? So, so when, when that ordinance was adopted, um, there were certain uses that just weren't in existence at that time. Or they were so new that they weren't caught and put in, into the ordinance, and, and, and one of those is a vape shop. And you're beginning to see these vape shops, smoke shops pop up. A lot of your small strip centers and your small retail centers, right? And, you know, they're, are they used, sure, they're used, are they a really good use in a kind of a pedestrian commercial area? Uh, may not be. Uh, so there was discussion with the township. Um, how do we take a look at these vape shops that are beginning to pop up in the township now? And how do we get a better understanding and our hands around them to make sure that they're not adversely impacting the commercial uses and, and the township as a whole? Um, had a conversation with, uh, Jill and Ted, we kind of talked about the way they did their interpretation at this point in time. And we talked about the changes in NAICS, which is the North American Industry Classification System. And if you're familiar with the Township Zoning Ordinance, a lot of your uses are based upon NAICS code. And in two thousand twenty-two, and I have a little bit of an outline in my, in my ordinance, uh, in, in, in my opening statement here. Uh, in twenty-twenty-two, uh, e-cigarette stores and vape shops were added to NAICS. Um, so, right, again, I talked about new uses coming online, so NAICS recognized that. Uh, e-cigarette stores and vape shops were a use that needed to be accounted for. So, uh, they added them to the, the, the classification. So how do we deal with these? Um, so. We're looking in table, and I'm gonna go back to my table again, right, table three dash three point two. Which is the use table for the mixed-use residential office, village center revitalization. And the mobile home park, right? So, um, you know, currently, the, the township, uh, looks at these uses as being. Uh, in NAICS code five, four, five, four, which is permitted in the village center, right? And this is what we just talked about earlier, so that use that we talked about could end up having a vape shop in there. Um, and in the business industrial, and again, we feel as if maybe the village center is not the best location for this type of use. So the discussion was, well, can we move them over into the business industrial zone? And we can. Um, and this is a text amendment, there's no zoning map amendment associated with this, right? We're not changing the zoning, we're just doing a text amendment to the zoning. So the proposal is in table three dash three point two, is to add. A new line, and will be tobacco, electronic cigarettes. And other smoking supply retailers. And not include med, medical marijuana dispensaries, but that's a special use that you've already identified. And then Jill and Ted and I talked about cigar shops, right, because. They're a little bit different, right, than a vape shop. So we would exempt, um, cigar shops from not being permitted in the village, um, in the village mix, the village center. So what we're gonna do in the, on page one, right, we'll add a new line to the table. We will not allow these uses other than medical marijuana and cigar stores, right, in, in these zoning districts. Then we will amend table three dash four point two, um, which. Deals with the business office institutional and business industrial. And we'll allow those uses, um, we'll allow those uses in the business industrial zone. Right, so we're taking, basically taking them out of the village center and moving them to the business industrial zone. We will kind of clean up some language, uh, to help with interpretation. Uh. We'll add a definition of what a tobacco, electronic cigarette, and other smoking supply retailer is. Um, and there were some specific discussions about identifying some uses within the definition. And again, we are, uh, not including medical marijuana and cigar stores within that definition. And then because we're creating this new use, we needed to create the use within the parking table. To allow for proper parking associated with the vape shop and the, and the cigarette stores. So basically, what we're doing is we're eliminating vape shops and, from the village center. And we're moving them over into the industrial zone. That's kind of a quick summary of what the proposal is, and then doing some tweaking of some language to allow for better interpretation. Um, and added definition to allow, you know, Jill and Doug, or Jill and Ted to, uh, um, you know, understand when the use comes in. They can actually define it and have that conversation with the potential user. Uh, now, what this doesn't do, if there's an existing vape shop in. The village center, right, that will become non-conforming, and that will fall under the non-conforming use section of the ordinance. So eventually, these vape shops may. Kind of peter out, they'll go away as they kind of flip and storefronts become vacant and new uses go in. Then the new vape, that vape, that space cannot be as a vape store again. So it's just a matter of time before, you know, these uses kind of roll over. And before we address the ones that we have within the village center district, right?
There's one there now and one that's out of business, right? So there were two, or there?
There were three, there were three, right? So there was one in the, um, the Valley Four Yard Shops, that one is gone. And then there's one in the Village Center Shopping Center next to Be Well, and there's this one in that there shopping. And you're saying they, they would, they're allowed to persist until they opt out?
That's right. The one, the, the, the one that's existing would be allowed to continue now if. You know, unless, you know, we'll defer to John with, um, the pending ordinance doctrine, right? So if, um, you know, the, the board authorizes movement of this ordinance, John, I don't know if we're too early in the process yet, but I'll defer to you. Right, that'd be advertised.
It's advertised, and. You know, that's, it's an effect, even though you haven't adopted it yet.
Gotcha.
Right, so for this evening, we're looking for direction from the board. If you have any concerns or comments about what's proposed, then if not, then, you know, we'll work with John's office, kind of finalize the ordinance language. And, just like I said, authorize, um, advertising of the ordinance, go through the planning commission review, has to go to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for review. So there is a little bit of a process before it can come back to you for adoption.
And one, uh, just slight nuance that I did not expect in this, after our agenda had been posted. I heard from, uh, a retail trade association called the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. Which, that acronym is NATO, which is kind of funny. But, uh, they're requesting a copy of this ordinance, uh, because I guess they are the trade organization. Which somehow chooses to support all of these uses that have proliferated everywhere. So we may get some feedback from them based off of the board's, uh.
Are we just gonna ask, are we gonna have to supply any justification, or is there any additional?
No. No, I mean, the ordinance isn't drafted yet, so, but it's in an ordinance form. And once it's advertised, you can get a copy of it, but not, you know, not, not, not until that.
Yeah, right now, we're just going through the kind of the vetting of the process, trying to flush out, you know, the concerns and, and, and how do we address? How do we address those concerns?
I'm very much in favor of this. I brought this to the manager and the solicitor, so I'm very much in favor of moving forward in this direction. Let me, whatever.
Okay.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions regarding the proposal here? Uh, does anybody from the public have any questions or comments regarding the proposal here? And no one on Zoom, I take it. Uh, so if, uh, if the, if the board is agreeable to these changes, um, I'd like to make a motion to advertise. Uh, the ordinance modifying regulations regarding smoke shops as described.
So, motion's been moved and seconded to advertising ordinance modifying regulations. Regarding smoke shop as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, and then Jill, I'll get with you, and we can, Jill and Ted will kind of.
Yeah, well, you, you have. All pieces.
Yeah, you just have to put it in the ordinance form, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on my agenda is, uh, discussion of the fire laws ordinance. Uh, so initially, we were going to discuss, uh, a attached fire laws ordinance, but actually, since, uh, posting the agenda. Um, Manjul Hoppin discovered that in a COVID section called insurance. Uh, we've actually already passed this, uh, and it is already.
Five or six years, five or six years ago.
Uh, not in that, twenty sixteen. So, um, we do not need to discuss this any further because there's already.
I can't take credit for that, that was Ted today.
Thank you, Ted.
Uh, so we can, uh, we can move on from, from this item. Does, does anyone have any questions about it? Right, uh, next item on my agenda is, um, the Building Code, uh, Board of Appeals appointment. So I'd like to advise everyone that the term of Building Code Board of Appeals member Mark Bellomo is set to expire on July sixteenth, twenty, two thousand twenty-five. Mark serves as the plumber as required by the Building Code. Uh, and I would like to recommend that the board reappoint Mark at the July meeting to keep his position filled. Does anyone have any questions or, or comments about that?
No, I'm in favor of that, and Chris says that they rarely, if ever meet.
They've met, uh, once. They were created to meet, but they have not yet.
Um, is, this is far motion, or is?
No, no, just offering a welcome back for your consideration and, excellent.
Cool, thank you very much. Uh, next item on my agenda is, um. Review zoning here, zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. Uh, so there are five applications on the zoning hearing board's May agenda, uh, they'll meet this Thursday, um, here in.
Tomorrow.
Uh, tomorrow, they're meeting tomorrow, that's, that's hard to know, right, thank you. Uh, meeting tomorrow, uh, there are five. Uh, that's, that's, my bad, she was reading my facial. Application number, the first application, uh, on the agenda is application number twenty-five dash oh-three. This is the application of Jim Vesey for sixteen thirty-three Republic Road. They seek a variance to permit accessory outdoor storage without closure. The second application is application number twenty-five dash ten. The application of Dennis Stein of two fourteen County Line Road. They seek a variance to allow a six-foot-tall privacy fence where four feet and fifty percent open is required. The third application is application number twenty-five dash eleven. The application of Daniel Cacida, uh, Morier, Moria, excuse me, of twenty-five twenty-seven Morgan Run. They seek a variance to reduce the twenty-five-foot rear yard setback to fifteen feet for the construction of a deck. Uh, fourth application is application number twenty-five dash twelve. This is the application of Lenny Chernak, twenty-eight ninety-five Pine Road. Who seeks a variance to allow existing non-conforming front yard setbacks to remain for a newly constructed building. And to allow parking in the required twenty-foot rear setback. And finally, application number twenty-five dash thirteen. This is the application of Abby and Tina Matthew of twenty-six fifty-nine Body Lane. They seek a variance to allow a six-foot-tall privacy fence where four feet, fifty percent open is required. Any questions about any of the applications coming up this week?
Just as a point of reference, that twenty-five twelve application at twenty-eight ninety-five Pine Road, that's the old O'Briens location. Where you had the sketch plan come in for renovating that building into office space. So this is their attempt to deal with some of the outstanding zoning issues. If that variance is granted, then those would now become compliance matters, and they would be able to proceed back into land development in the board commissioners.
Thank you for that. The, um, four decisions were made, uh, at the April meeting. Uh, the first was for application number twenty-five dash oh-five. This would be the application of Andre Levitsky and Maria Betzen of five seven three Philip Road. They saw variances to increase their lot coverage to thirty-three point seven percent. And to reduce the side yard setback to zero feet for an already constructed patio. These variances were written. Application number twenty-five dash zero seven, the application of Alexandra Darian of thirty-five sixty-four Chimney Swift Drive. She saw a variance to permit a six-foot-tall privacy fence, the variance was granted. Application number twenty-five dash oh-eight, the application of Roberto Malave Junior. Who saw the variances to reduce the side yard setback from fifteen to ten feet. And to allow a nine hundred twenty-five square foot in-law suite for seven hundred square feet permitted. That variance was granted. And finally, application number twenty-five dash oh-nine, the application of Albert Alloian for ninety-one Filmon Avenue. Who saw variances for an already constructed privacy fence and carport, those variances were denied. Any questions about decisions rendered in April zoning hearing board meeting? All right, um, last item on my agenda, my liaison positions, uh, and was a liaison for the zoning hearing board, which I just reported on. And the voting, the Building Code Board of Appeals, as we just stated, I'm not that yet, so my report is complete. Pass it back to President Kurtz.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanton. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee, Jill.
Thanks, President Kurtz. First item, review and consider Arley Grant Project bid award. May second, we opened up the bids for the two Welsh Road traffic signal upgrades. The little bidder was Charles A. Higgins and Son for two hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two hours and seventy-three cents. That, uh, this product's fully funded by the Arley Grant, which the county has received, so it'll be no cost to the taxpayer. Any questions from the board? From the public?
Chris, could these, this, these are the two intersections at. Welsh and.
Valley and Welsh.
And Leaven. Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, yep. Um, I'd like to make a motion and award the Arley Grant. Alright, yep, um, I'd like to make a motion to award the Arley Grant project to Charles A. Higgins and Son Inc. For two hundred eighty-nine thousand, you know, two thousand two cents.
Motion's been moved and seconded to award the Arley Grant project to Charles A. Higgins and Son Inc. For two hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you, commissioners.
In a mess, review and consider authorization to bid the floodgates, we're gonna switch that up, we actually. Uh, we're gonna change that from putting it out to bid, we're gonna, the floodgates, we got a grant for eighty thousand, Chris. And we're recommending to put out, not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars for the project. So that we can automatically hire the bidder for it without coming back in front of us.
The thing, yeah, the thing that happened is that the vendor had gone dark on us. So we had reached out to a neighboring township who was our contact for them, who advised, one, they were not on CoStars. And two, advised of how they did their purchase. They did it in a way that we were not comfortable with, which resulted in the agenda that we had tonight for um, authorizing bidding. But then Steve got a call finally today from the company. So just cutting nice and close to meeting time, um, and they advised that they actually were a CoStar vendor. They provided us their uh, their licensing information, it was. It happened to expire in October. So the way that we're recommending we do this is for the board to authorize a price not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. The total quote is for about eighty-two and change. Our grant actually is a little bit less than eighty thousand dollars because we had added one more location after applying, but. It's being funded through the Stormwater Fund, so there's sufficient funds to handle this. However, Steve will not place the order until we have the final and updated CoStars information in hand. So that we can actually place the order that way, does all of that make sense?
Yes. Any questions from the board, from the public? Okay, so. But I, I'll make a motion to. Get, get a bid. Not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars for floodgates.
Through CoStars.
Through CoStars.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize the bidding of the floodgates project not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars for CoStars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any, any opposed? Thank you, commissioners.
Next item on Public Works, kick it over to Steve.
Let's give you a couple of things, you guys have my report, I've been in contact with Panda for resurfacing project. And or contractor having any feedback, but I expect that within the next couple of weeks, I'll be dating one of them to start. And then we can get letters out, we've already started doing our prep work or any uh, handicap ramps, any storm journeys we've been out building up. HBA softball baseball's, you know, full swing now, believe it or not, opening day was last month and seems like it was forever here, but. So we're supplementing it, cutting it for grass with our contractor and making sure that the supplies stay there for those guys and helping them out with whatever they need. Uh, Denise mentioned our birthday planning projects.
God, Steve, I want to thank you and the entire Public Works Department, you guys did a fabulous job preparing the site.
It was great, the kids were great, a lot of kids. We had a hundred thirty-eight one calls that we marked this month, I put this in every month, that's what Matt does, our stormwater guy now, so. It's a, it's a lot of time, we got the moth one call, so, hundred thirty-eight moth calls and fourteen emergency moth calls he was. Um, we met with two separate contractors for a couple of different lining projects, for sanitary sewer lining project. Um, we have a little bridge project we're looking at on Valley Road. And the lining of a pipe uh, in Lower Moonport that's in March, capital budget. Um, so, well, we had our field inspection for turf. Uh, this month, we do twice a year, they come in, they do a heavy grooming, heavy cleaning. And once a year, they do a G max compression test, they did that, our field's in excellent shape. They said we took excellent care of it and everything fast with line up.
What's the latest on the Federal Mill Bridge project?
So, I know that they're bringing up uh, the stone to the shop. I, I guess they're on schedule, I've stopped in a couple times, I see Pico's there, they're still doing the utility work. Um, so I guess that's blowing them up a little bit, but they are removing all the stone. They bring it up to our shop, it's all marked and categorized and.
Yeah.
But they're, they're, I guess they're moving now on schedule.
Cool, when's it supposed to be finished? When is it?
November. That's. November is their.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it, um, liaison HBA, uh, Saturday night, we had a rain date. For the uh, baseball game under the lights, uh, weather ended up being great, big turnout by a lot of people. Um, thanks Chief for officers keeping everyone in check. Steve's crew for helping out, getting the light set up and everything, with another thanks to Carndall for supplying them, because we couldn't do it without them, we appreciate that. Um, the uh, they have basketball tryouts, so if you're not registered, basketball travel tryouts are the first week in June, first and second week. And uh, soccer's coming to an end, um. First time, they have six teams go into the Pennsylvania State Cup Championship, which is this weekend held at the Union Stadium, so um. There's a potential for seventeen to go, including my twenty fifteen-year-old son and the two thousand eleven girls, so. Um, they're this weekend, so it's first time HBA, it's, it's pretty successful to have seventeen's potentially in the state cup championship, so that's, that's the. Goals to win the state cup, so that's pretty cool. And uh, that's all I have for. The liaison position, back to you Denise.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Pace. Next chair recognizes Commissioner Canal and Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Joe.
Thank you, President Kurtz, first up on my agenda tonight is a memo from Chief Showmaker, the Manager Hoppin.
Oh geez. Chief, I'm gonna defer to you.
Good evening, everyone, spare with us for all everything from our allergies and colds that we have, so. Uh, in front of you, you have a memo that I sent off to Manager Hoppin. Uh, looking to see if there's any interest from the board in pursuing the uh, firefighter tax relief. That are outlined in Act one seventy-two of Pennsylvania, little history on that. Um, in order to incentivize, incentivize uh, members of the fire companies and to recruit and retain them. Uh, the legislation got on board with us and permitted the municipalities, whether it be a township, borough, whatever. To enact tax ordinances that can provide tax rebates to our volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel. Uh, currently, Montgomery County has enacted that ordinance. And both the Huntington Valley Fire Company and the Brenness Fire Company both participate in that program. But they wrote an ordinance which is a uh, a model ordinance for the entire program. I think it would be easy for us to do the same thing and mirror the ordinance that is in place for the county. Which recognized as a point system and they, they categorize points for everybody. The important part of it is, it's not just the active firefighters that ride the trucks. It also benefits the firefighters behind the scenes or the members behind the scenes to do the administrative work. So they can gain points and they get anywhere from ten to a hundred percent rebate on their taxes. So this would be for the local township tax, if you're looking to pursue. One thing that's a little interesting in the law, when I read it too, and I looked into it a little bit more. Uh, school taxes are actually eligible for that too, and that's a really big benefit if you can get that passed. As of, you know, I only know one that is in place and that's in the Shively School District, but the one I can find in the Commonwealth so far. I know there's a number of them that are in process, I think Abington County is in process of trying to get that in place. But right now, we're just talking about our, a local township tax, so in front of you, I'm asking, is there interest to pursue? Before we get and dig into this a little bit deeper, uh, I don't want to waste my time if it's not, but if there is an interest, and I think it's a good benefit for our volunteers. Think we should pursue it and that's my recommendation.
I can carry with Mark, I think it's a great recruitment and retention tool for the active volunteers we have that provide a service to our community, and I'm in support of it.
I'm absolutely in support of it, I have one question. For the community events, when they do fire prevention and, you know, Memorial Day ceremonies, would that count also?
Uh, I have to look at the, the, I'm not totally familiar with the law, so I have to look at it.
A lot of time, you know.
We would, we would outline those. You actually set the criteria and the amounts to us, the elected officials.
Okay.
But while the solicitor look a little bit further into it, there is interest and then we can get an ordinance drafted up to look at. The important thing is, it would be for next year, there's cutoff dates in which the information has to be to the tax collector to, to do what has to happen. And also the fire commissioner of the state has notified of it, I don't even know what that process is, I don't think they have that process yet, but.
Sure.
There's a lot of municipalities starting to do this, so I, I think it's a good thing and.
And then some we can give to, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Chief, I, I have one question, so I, I, I'm in agreement with uh, with having, with, with doing this. Is there any uh, reciprocity so that if we have somebody that is a volunteer for our fire company? But they live, say, in Abington that has passed it, can they get credit, is it, is there? reciprocity that, like, okay, hey, we're participating and we're gonna keep some points and, you know, you can get a credit.
I'm not aware of that, but I haven't really, I'm, you know, I don't know a lot about this, I think, so it's something.
However.
Yeah, it's only for the municipality to serve, if, if it's enacted, if the firefighter is a resident.
They have.
So an Abington resident working in the lower moorland would not be eligible for.
That's correct.
Lower moorlands.
Because we have some members of Dopper's side in.
Well, that's why I was asking, then, if we passed it, and say, Abington passed it, so that they both have a program. But we have somebody that's participating in our fire company, and because they also.
Yeah, it's separate by municipal boundary.
So that's why the, the, the main benefit so far for that. Uh, like version is the county exemption, right? And there hasn't necessarily been worked out a way to do the cross-measurability, which either way is important, so, but it is a deficiency.
So then log in with the manager and the solicitor, we'll get something yet drafted up to look at, so.
Yeah, I, I, but that's what I want to ask once they're done there. So solicitor, just, I guess for tonight, it seems like there's general feedback from the board to pursue it. Two options would either be that we bring a version back that has to be authorized for advertising. Or could the board tonight authorize advertising and we distribute a draft? Informally, to be able to move it along more quickly, given that we probably in our own sometime constraint to have a supply of twenty-six tests.
Yeah, the, I, I, I mean, the concept is, as Chief explained, I mean, it's gotta be a resident, uh, it's only the township taxes. The county would have their own reporting requirements.
Right, and I think we would mirror exactly what they have, because what the fire companies are doing now would match that for ours.
Right.
So it'd be a lot easier, a lot less work.
If it's, hey, I would recommend the board authorize kind of that iteration for advertising, we'll put that draft together and bring that back.
Alright, I'll make the, uh, any discussion further from the board.
Joe, I want to thank you for also bringing this to the table.
Any questions from the public, come on up, Chuck.
But they, they'll move, chief, how many volunteer firefighters live in low water?
Uh, I can tell you, looking at the sheets are giving to the, for the county taxes, a little bit over two dozen that are eligible for the program, twenty-four. Roughly, a little bit more than that probably.
How many firefighters do we actually have now that volunteer in low water?
Uh, I don't know that answer, because when you determine volunteer, are you talking people that actually ride trucks or people that are members of the organization?
Well, members of the organization would get it also if they live in low water, right?
As long as they participate and gain points by coming to meetings and stuff.
So more, more than that, twenty-four that you said is people that qualify for this. Members, they might not be.
Right, so if other municipalities pick up on this, do we stand to lose volunteer firefighters? And they go to their municipalities and then our volunteers go lower.
What do you mean?
If, if, if you live in Abington, you volunteer in the valley, might I start volunteering instead in Abington?
And not low water?
If Abington was offering that and the lower moorland wasn't.
Like, say if they see how successful, if it does pass here in low water. And Abington picks up and it brings it back to the council, and they say, well, we're gonna adapt this uh, program also. Do we stand a chance of losing firefighters going back to the Abington Fire Department and losing?
It sounds like something for our state representatives to figure out.
Yeah, so, okay, they could do that, like what we do.
Well, I just, it's concerned.
We have that with our stipend program, they jump back and forth, different places, so.
Didn't you guys just say they have to live in the township where the town?
That is right, that's right. Then they're not all.
Then they're not eligible, right. Well, if Abington adopts this program, we'll lose our volunteer firefighters going to Abington.
Well, they would have to move there, Chuck.
They may live there already.
They may live there, right.
We're maybe talking about a possible population of one or two.
One or two, okay, alright, that's all it is, that's all I just wanted to say, if we would lose anything.
Alright, any other questions from the public on this? I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising ordinance to establish Act one seventy-two, fire EMS volunteer tax credits passed, described.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising with ordinance to establish Act one seventy-two, fire EMS. Volunteer tax credits as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did not hear any opposed, thank you, commissioners.
Alright, next up, I have a memo from Chief Smith, I'm gonna bring you up for this one regarding the establishment. Of fees for police department audio and video records.
Yes. Um, so, when, uh, for the, wait to note, well, those fees are already established by the Office of Open Records. When someone requests video, however, from a police department or any kind of digital evidence. Uh, there are no fees that are recommended by the Office of Open Records. So we have to establish a fee for that and has to be a resolution passed for that. Um, and looking at other municipalities and other police departments and using our accreditation service to kind of gauge where we should be. They recommend the fee of one hundred dollars for any digital evidence that's requested. So that's where this, this fee would come from. Um, and it's just if someone, if they, if they request for video with granted, they would have to pay a hundred dollar fee to get that video.
Does it stipulate how much, like how large that request that it, that could be?
Yeah, that meaning like, like how big, no, it does not, it's just any electric file, like if, or electronic file, um, if it's. Multiple different files, it would be, I guess it could be. Probably multiple different fees, yeah, there's a quest for that, that. But any event that we have, everything is stored in one file. So you could have multiple different officers' videos that all, if it's the same incident, it goes into one file, so we wouldn't charge someone. And like seven, if there were seven officers there, seven hundred dollars, we would just charge them a hundred dollar fee.
So it's a hundred dollars per incident.
Correct.
I wanted to take you guys of misinformation, like how many people.
So, well, and I'll be honest, a lot of ours is because it's of a criminal nature, we're not allowed to release it by the law as it exists anyway. Um, however, the ones that are approved, it, it doesn't take that much time, it's sometimes just transparent to, um. Transferring to whatever media they want it on, if it's a thumb drive or, that's what we have to provide, those things have a cost as well, so we would have to have those on hand. So it's kind of just cover some of the administrative costs to get them, um, and to kind of page through the process, so.
At the standard?
Yes, yes, same, same with our um, written records, it's very, very standard process. It's a form that gets filled out, it's just very similar, the form is actually provided to us by the um, Office of Open Records, however, we have to establish.
Do other municipalities charge other?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, that's what we, that was part of what we did, was look at others just to make sure we weren't being, you know, too high, too low or anything, we're just, we're standard with whatever it is.
Okay, so we're in line with the.
Yes.
Amount of money.
Alright, any questions from the board on this, and from the public on this? No, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five thirteen, establishing police and audio video releases.
Motion's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five, then it's thirteen as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, commissioners.
Alright, next up on my agenda, it is LMPD disciplinary matter settlement agreement. Last month, Board of Chief Smith's disciplinary recommendations for a matter involving Sergeant Matthew Kohler. Sergeant Kohler appealed that decision with Civil Service Commission, which originally was scheduled to appeal for an appeal hearing on April thirty, twenty twenty-five.
That's sufficient for what we need to announce publicly.
There we go. A motion to approve the settlement agreement for the disciplinary matter involving Sergeant Matthew. I would like to make a motion to approve the settlement agreement for the disciplinary matter involving Sergeant Matthew Kohler.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the settlement agreement for the disciplinary matter involving Sergeant Matthew Kohler. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did not hear any opposed, thank you. Did not hear any votes. Thank you. So much, Commissioner.
Chief, go with your reports.
Uh, my full report was, was submitted, however, just some highlights. We had, uh, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two calls per service in the month of April. Um, our bus patrol update, just to follow up, I know there were some questions, uh, last month. Uh, I took a look at our numbers and we are at six hundred and twenty. Now, this is through March, so the end of March. So January through the end of March, we had six hundred and twenty violations. If you recall, we were roughly three hundred every single month for the first, uh, four months of the program. So it has gone down a little bit, uh, which is something we like to see thankfully. Um, but we are just over two hundred a month roughly in the beginning of the year. Um, now, you know, I'm, I'm again, as, as hopeful as I am, you know, some of those things could be holiday driven, less, less school students going to some. Uh, so less buses being out there, but, you know, I'm hopeful that the program is working and doing what it wanted to do, uh, stopping the cars from wandering around buses. Uh, some of the crime updates, we had, um, several more disturbances, a couple criminal mischiefs as the weather gets warmer. These things tend to occur. Um, just more people are outside. Um, some public service announcements, again with that warmer weather, um, people are out, dogs are out, keep your dogs on a leash. We're taking these calls more often in the summertime. Uh, if the dog's off your property, you have to have it on a leash. Clean up after your dogs. It's another one we routinely get. Um, and also just for the public, just burglaries and thefts often occur in these spring and summer months when people are away. Um, I encourage people to use, um, our Crime Watch platform. You can schedule it in Wayhouse. It's, you submit it to us, it comes right directly to us. It doesn't go to anybody else. Um, and we will know when you're away or officer can do some extra patrols and if something looks unusual at your house, we can, uh, be aware of that.
Is that a online service?
It's, it's online. You can also call in or you can stop into the station, so. Um, yeah, very easy to get done, but we, you know, we do keep, do that, provide that service and keep an extra eye on your house. Um, busy community in March. I know, um, Mr. Harris talked about a couple of them. We took part in the Township Egg Hunt, which was a great event. Um, the Earth Day event, we had some officers out there. I drove second grade tours, which are always very fun, uh, for the students. And we also did our cyber bullying, cyber bullying, excuse me, and internet safety presentation at St. Albert's grade for their sixth, seventh, and eighth grader. So just kind of making them aware of what can happen on social media, uh, some kind of employees that, um, these students get victimized. These, these programs were also done at our, our high school as well, but it's done internally with our school resource officers, but we also helped out St. Albert's and. Um, brought both Detective Palmer and Detective Samuels, our school resource officers out and provided that presentation. Uh, some upcoming events, and again, Commissioner Harris mentioned, we have our LMPD pop-up party. Uh, it's supposed to be some, a bounce house, some games. There'll be a lot of officers in the side lot of Township building from six to eight on Friday. We're hoping the weather cooperates. Um, we're also taking part in this weekend in Upper Southampton's Touch a Truck event, which is a sensory event. Um, so we'll have some officers out there, our police supervisors truck will be out there. Uh, it's a great event, very well attended. Um, and that's something we partnered with Southern Southampton to take, so. Smart. Quick report, any questions from that?
Any questions from the board? Anything for the public? Thank you, Chief Smith. Next up, Fire Marshal Shelly.
Good evening, commissioners. Just a couple of quick things, uh, to go over, um, on our emergency management.
Yeah, you said it, sir.
Yeah, I have my Barry White voice tonight. We got Mark Shoemaker and Ted and some Brennathan, uh, members, uh, did a presentation at the Cheltenham, uh, emergency management meeting with our, um. Our evacuation saw two nursing homes and it was very well received. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Uh, we've been working very diligently with the Huntington Valley skilled nursing and getting that building back up and running. Uh, all the staff has been involved with, uh, inspections, meetings and a constant back and forth emails. So I think we're looking sometime next month to get back in service. We're pretty close. Uh, there'll be a, a full sprinkler alarm, fire alarm test, um, to get everything taken care of, so. We're working well with the, and the state and the county to get that completed. Um, during the month, uh, we had a large domestic water pipe that broke at Carson Terrace and, uh. We had to evacuate the entire building. We gave them the opportunity to evacuate where it's still. So again, the full staff was involved with this as far as inspections, plumbing permits. And getting the building back up and running. There are still additional, there's about, uh, I think there's fifteen apartments that are still being worked on that were flooded out. But all the residents are back. The water has been taken care of. The pipe has been fixed. And there's some ongoing issues that we are working with the facility. Any questions?
No questions from anything from the, how about the public? Nope, I have to bow out. Good morning. Chief Shoemaker.
Okay, a lot of my things Bob and I were uncovered, but I'll highlight a couple of them, uh. As you know, and you see my report, I've attended a number of different meetings throughout the, uh, both local, county, state. It's been, uh, meeting after meeting after meeting it seems anymore, but, uh, we're keeping busy with that, keeping up to date on all the current, uh, events and, uh. Workings of the Pennsylvania Fire Service that impact us as far as grants and requirements that we have to meet. So we do spend a lot of time at those meetings, getting that information and sharing information with them as well. Uh, as far as the training goes, we continuously have our ongoing training with the new tower ladder. I should know, it's, uh, it takes quite a bit of time to get everybody through that, keep everybody proficient at it. So we're working diligently, diligently to make sure that we keep up with that. Uh, there was a dealer maintenance class from Glick Fire Equipment that was put on. Chris kind of spearheaded that and had a good turnout for that. That was to deal with. Uh, the entrance of maintenance of the vehicle and some of the operations that weren't covered when the, uh, factory people came out. So that was a good, uh, thing that happened there. Uh, there's a lot of continuous education on the EMS side that we're required to do and we're getting that done. Uh, we had some joint training between the two stations. There was a tower operator. A class that they did, the placement of the ladder down the Crescent Field and some home stretches. Unfortunately, our participation wasn't that great that night, so we're trying to work on making sure we get both groups together. And we have a lot of people there when we do do that, so that's one of our challenges, but, uh, we will overcome that. Um, administratively. Uh, I spent some time, again, it's not really learnable, but Brennathan, we have that new elementary school going up there, so I've been doing a lot of work with the, uh, site development up there. We had some issues for access on the fire access lanes. We've gotten that straightened out. Uh, and then with some knockbox items that we're trying to work out with them, which the Fire Marshal's been assisting me with that as well. Uh, we had a problem with the tower ladder tires on the new tower ladder. We had defective tires on the rear of the truck. Glick and Pierce both stepped up. As of today, they were replaced, so there's all new tires on the truck. They, a different manufacturer came in and, uh, we see how that goes, but it should be pretty good. I did the final sign off on the plans for the new engine this week. Uh, that's scheduled to go probably online late September with a November delivery date, so that's still on schedule and doing well. Uh, our new ambulance is currently being built. It's actually being painted and we were trying to improve paint, uh. Matches today, but they had the wrong color, so we're trying to get that worked out. And that's the one that's being funded by the Brennathan Fire Company. They're taking care of that. But all the ambulances, all the trucks up at the Brennathan, Brennathan Station have been rebranded to the Fetter's Mall Fire Rescue. All the Huntington Valley trucks are scheduled to start on May twenty-sixth. We're hoping that happens. It's been a little bit of delay because they're a little backed up with all the. Vehicles coming in from state contracts for the police department, so it's hard for them to keep up with that. But we're on schedule to get that changed over, so that's good. And, uh, that should do it for that. As far as response, uh, for the Huntington Valley Station nineteen, for the month of, uh, March twenty twenty-five, our benchmark was met forty-two percent of the time. And then at the nineteen-one station, which is the Brennathan Station, our, uh, response was, uh, met. I have a percentage here somewhere, eighty point eight percent of the time with a six minute and three second, uh, arrival time on calls. With an average of three point eight seven personnel on the truck, so that's where we're following that a little bit and that's where we're getting to that eighty percent, so we're, we're trying to work on that too.
So, um, can I ask a question, my question on that? So. Meeting benchmark eighty point eight percent. So four out of five calls, we have four people.
Yes.
And then there's a fifth call.
Yeah.
We have less than.
What happens, we may have an ambulance call and then a fire call comes in in the middle of the night, we'll have four people on staff and that's what changes that, drives that down.
And do you know for Huntington Valley, so. Meeting at four, I mean, forty-two percent time, is it due to staff, time?
Both.
Are you able to break out, help us understand the, the differences there?
Not with the current program. That's why we're trying to get everybody on the one reporting system, make it a little bit easier. Uh, we have some challenges, as I mentioned, with the stipend program. Uh, we don't always have four people on during the day like we'd like to have. Sometimes it's three, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's one. Uh, it's becoming very competitive. There's a lot of places starting to do that program, so. The, these are folks, and most of them are younger, they're jumping around to the different locations. It's becoming a little bit of a challenge for Ted and his group to manage. I don't really have a part in the stipend program. I stay out of that. But they're working diligently to get the people in here and try to staff as much as they can. Now, with that said, that when there's numbers down, that's what skews that and brings that forty-three percent down. We'd like to try to work that up, but. You know, we're dealing with what we have at this.
Yeah, yeah, I, to me, it's more just understanding. Why we're missing benchmarks, what's driving that?
And there, there are some time issues and all the night notes, it's, we depend on the volunteers at that point. Uh, other than the, the career staff that's on, and so that may try their times up a little bit because it's a little bit tougher to get out, you know, bed, you gotta be dressed, got your car guns. So.
Setting expectations, I would say Huntington Valley having a lower. Benchmark, like success rate makes sense because where the, the career investment was made was through Brennathan Fire Company. So of course, there's people stationed, yeah, of course, I get that.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, not challenging numbers or, or I, to me, I'm just tuning your press on. I'm, I'm thinking about the future.
Right, right.
I'm. Without like, really clear understanding, it's gonna be hard to, to, to say like, yeah, that's the, that's what we need to do, so I. I know you're working on it, but.
No, then again, it takes time. You know, I have a plan. You see what the plan is, what I'd like to be at, the level I think it should be at twenty-four seven, and that's what we're working towards. It's just taking time to get there. And then as we, we build this new organization, which we're currently doing, you know, it's umbrellaed under the Fetter's Mall Fire Rescue. We still have the separate organizations, but we're molding everybody together. Let's come along with it.
And then you talk about the second program being more competitive. Is that, is that money? Is that what that's coming down to?
Well, you know, uh, it, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. We actually probably are one of the topper rates with it, but I mean, it's not a lot of money, to be honest with you. But kids like to go where the action is too. So some areas that are now starting up may be a little bit busier or see more fire calls than we see here. And that, that makes a difference on, I, I, that's what I see at least.
Do people, if they're a part of a different house, this type of program. Does that, uh, uh, combine with, with anything they get from us in terms of their maximum amount? Isn't, isn't one of the issues with this type of programs that somebody hit a maximum?
Yes.
And then they can't participate? Does that, oh?
No.
So it's.
Because what, what, originally when it first started, a lot of our stipend guys would be working at Trevo's one day, coming over here the next day.
Okay.
So they can, they can all that level, yeah.
Okay, because it has to do with having like an employment stake in your organization that is paid.
Right.
So because they're separate.
They're the ones that are capped on doing.
Okay, all right, so just learning, thank you.
I'll be right back in about a moment. So Brennathan had four fire calls.
They had four fire calls in Brennathan.
That, that's what I was getting at. So Huntington Valley had three fire calls in Brennathan, so four fire calls in Brennathan, we went to three of them, right? So just follow up a minute. Total for year to date, one hundred and forty-seven fire calls.
Oh.
That Brennathan responded to. Huntington Valley one sixty-four year to date, right? So somebody calls. Resident calls, hi, my house is on fire, my kitchen. Dude, does Brennathan, and, and I lived on Pepper Road in Huntington Valley.
Okay.
In Lower Moreland.
Yep.
Does Brennathan automatically get dispatched?
Yes.
Okay, so they're automatically sent there regardless.
That's correct.
If it's a.
Anything in the township, minus a fire investigation.
Yep, the difference, the difference you're seeing in those numbered totals are mutually runs outside of our area. So Brennathan may go to a, a certain amount and Huntington Valley may go to other areas that Brennathan doesn't go to. So that's why that little.
Fire, yeah, fire in Brennathan, Huntington Valley goes everywhere.
Yeah.
It's just a su- support system, right?
Yep, they both go.
I'm just kidding. And so if I call, does the dispatcher who answers the phone, does he know if I'm in Lower Moreland?
Oh, pre, pre-programmed to a computer.
Well, it depends. If you're calling from yourself on your, on your Philly border, you may go to Philly. If you're up on Caroline Road, you may go to Bucks.
But they try to try to call.
But you have to tell them what township you're in.
Okay.
Okay.
It's actually pretty good now. It's, it's a lot better than it used to be.
Yeah. Just looking at the numbers.
That's why the numbers are skewed or they look skewed. It's because of the mutual age factor that comes into play a lot.
Right.
But even though we're, we're under one call signal.
Hmm.
There, that, that stills that designating which house goes out? Or is that, is, is the call.
They both go.
And, and.
Right.
Okay, it's not one or the other. You're not getting that call.
Most calls, I should say. I, I, fire investigations are a little bit different. We're handling it separately, but that's usually Bob and the.
Yeah, it's a mercy.
Yeah.
And that also depends, like say Rockledge calls specifically for the tower. That would come out of Huntington Valley Station, that would be a call for them, but not for Brennathan. Vice versa, Bucks may call for a squad out of Brennathan Station, but the tower might not be doing.
And that's what is triggering the numbers.
You got it.
That's hard to explain, but that's, that, or.
Yeah.
Realize what that is, but that's what it means.
Yeah, sure.
Pretty sure areas we get to Detroit.
Yeah, it'll, it'll definitely be helpful to combine all these.
Making my job so much easier, I can tell you.
Chief, if I have one quick question, I don't think it'll be long. The forty-two percent for Huntington Valley, that seems like that's, it's, it's up and it's getting a little better.
It, it's actually what dabbled with this time from last time, so it's, you know, it depends on one, the call volume and two. What time of day it is.
Okay.
It's daytime or up, like some of the nights we're up to midnight with the stipend crew too.
Okay.
But there's nights we don't have men and then from twelve o'clock to six o'clock in the morning, it's the volunteer staff. So it, it all depends on when the calls are, with the times, how fast it's gonna be and how it changes that percentage.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mark from the board? All right, I'm gonna tag on with Mark's report about firing EMS in Lower Moreland right here. Mark, if you can stay up just in case I need clarification, verification on any of this. EJ, if you can hit those slides, that'd be great. Jay's pulling this up. Just let me get the background. I've been getting a lot of, uh, communication from residents in the township regarding the current state of firing EMS. In the township and asking for some clarification and timeless transparency, what's occurring? So I'm just gonna give a brief breakdown of this. For the firing EMS in Lowmore, per the first. Per the first class Township Code, Board of Commissioners has the responsibility to ensure both fire and EMS services are being provided to the community. That's what we're trying to ascertain and do, as you can see, we're giving. Multiple studies have been performed between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twenty-four to continually, continuously review adequacy of service provided. Lower Moreland is not immune to the natural trend of reducing volunteerism. Back in the seventies, we had three hundred plus thousand firefighters in the state of Pennsylvania. Today, we have around thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand volunteers.
It's thirty-three.
Thirty-three, dropping even lower as of twenty twenty-five. My number has been two twenty-four. So we're down to ten percent of the stabbing we had fifty years ago here. And that's due to multiply to different factors. The modern certification standards are also a lot to ask volunteers. When I was in fire school, I believe it was around eighty hours. Then we jumped to eighty-eight. Now it's at a hundred and sixty-six plus hours to get your standard firefighter one certification. EMT school, I think, is at two hundred and forty hours. Going to be a paramedic, you're now talking two thousand plus hours required. And to do that as a volunteer is extremely difficult and takes a lot of time and dedication away from your family. Now with most families having dual income, reducing families with the husband and wife working. It's tough to maintain and that's why we're seeing a significant decrease, not to mention the social needs, children, so. Um, again, emergency services analysis, which was presented in September of twenty twenty-four and for, affirm the concerns of prior studies. We have an issue. We can see that by our response times and everything else, and that's why we're here trying to address it. The current system, as Mark even indicated tonight, does not meet baseline response standards of the NFA or what we have determined that we want here in the township. That's why we're providing path forward with a career and a volunteer model combined. To hit those numbers and provide the best services for our community. Next slide, please. All right, so the current Huntington Valley Station, people come up to me all the time and say, well, Brennathan has a station right down the street and Huntington Valley has a station. Why can't they just move into Brennathan Station? Or why can't you retro Huntington Valley? Well, Huntington Valley Station was built in the nineteen fifties. It can't be renovated to meet the modern needs. Such as the sleeping quarters. And with the current standards of how that radish should be stored and so on. The township is currently leading the process to acquire land and develop financial strategy and build professional. Team to plan and conduct a new fire rescue station. You guys heard about that tonight during the bond view. That's why we're getting that money in place because we know we need to obtain this new station. We've been acquiring land on Huntington Pike, because that was identified as one of the ideal spots for a station. And this isn't a short process. I can tell you, I've been in the fire service in this community since nineteen ninety-nine. I remember back, dating back to oh-eight is when we first had these talks. So we're seventeen years into it, and it was probably even before that. So right now, we already discussed the property uh, that is owned by the Academy, the New Church, and is one of the other parcels we need. As we've already determined, we'll be getting the numbers on appraisal from them and see if we can come to common ground and do a deep combination, condemnation. Next slide, please. Alright, so calls for service, my numbers are a little bit different than Mark. Um, mine are going back to March's numbers, some are today's numbers, and they're a little bit intermixed, so it's a little bit skewed. And one additional number that I have here that you guys aren't seeing was modified after, so I'll, I'll just clarify that. In the township, there's been a hundred and thirty-three calls in the borough, twenty-three calls. Eleven of those were at A and C for alarm systems and stuff of that nature. So there was an additional seven other calls, as you can see, my numbers, their numbers slightly all pretty close. Fourteen percent of total fire calls being in Bernathan Borough. EMS calls, which is a much larger number, we've had three hundred and eighty-six in the township. We've had forty-six in Bernathan Borough. But one of the key numbers that's missing off there is two hundred and four into other areas, meaning Abington, Upper Moreland. And Fox County, so on, other municipalities. That's because the EMS system right now is overtaxed and doesn't have enough personnel. We are lucky to provide the service we do with the great personnel that we have. They're actually having a third truck out at Bernathan right now, just because of the volume. They need that to maintain, maintain two trucks in service when another one's down for repair. Because our call volumes increasing dramatically. So where does that take us? Next slide, please. Shared costs, this has come up a lot with a bunch of different people also, well, what's Bernathan bringing, what are we doing, who's paying for what and so on? Um, through the existing intergovernmental agreements, Lower Mullen Township funds seventy-five percent of the costs related to the chief of emergency services position. Bernathan Borough has been paying for twenty-five percent. Chief Showmaker was never brought on as a consultant as indicated by some people that they thought he was. He was a full-time physician from, uh, from. With that being said, moving on to twenty twenty-five, quarterly full-time career positions were created for twenty twenty-five. Lower Mullen Township funded eighty-five percent of the cost for these new employees. Bernathan Borough decided to fund ten percent of the cost for these new employees. Bernathan Fire Company covered the remaining five percent. The first loan payment is due for the new ladder truck in twenty twenty-five. Lower Mullen Township will fund ninety percent of the payment, Bernathan Borough will fund ten percent of the payment for you. Yes, so what we're gonna do is get into this a little bit more as we get down there. I don't have that on my slide, and I'm gonna have to read it this way, so I do apologize if my voice is a little bit mumbled. Cause I can't read that from here. So going down a little bit further. We'll go on to the twenty. Perfect, you were the best. Thank you. Alright, so first loan payment is due for the new ladder truck in twenty twenty-five, Lower Mullen Township will fund ninety percent of the payment. Bernathan Borough will also fund ten percent of the payment. I believe also Chris clarified, if I'm wrong, Bernathan Borough is paying fifteen percent of the money already placed down. So we'll run to approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Towards that truck. Going on further into twenty twenty-six, Bernathan Borough has proposed shifting their funding to a ninety-ten split for all expenses moving ahead. It's in our court right now to respond with whether we're gonna accept that, push for more, or come up with something. That has not been fully decided yet. The partnership with Bernathan Borough dissolves, will be responsible for a hundred percent of the cost of the new building, fire and EMS. We must provide it to the township residents, it's required. Right now, just for a comparison, so you guys have it. Lower Mullen Township has approximately forty-four hundred and eighteen homes. Bernathan Borough has three hundred and five. We have ninety-three percent, they have seven. Population census in twenty twenty. LM has thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen residents. Bernathan has thirteen hundred and two. Looking at the numbers, the ten percent is in line based on the population and on the number of homes that we are saying. And when you're looking at the call volume, it's about six point four percent of all the EMS calls being in Bernathan Borough. The rest being outside of that. Again, a large majority is the mutual aid outside of Lower Mullen Township. But the primary focus again is Lower Mullen Township, and that is where the bulk of our calls are. With that being said, we have to provide this service. We have a lot of great personnel and what matters is when somebody picks up the phone and calls nine-one-one in our township, we have the best people responding. In the shortest amount of time to take care of their emergencies. That's what we're trying to do with this, and that's what we're gonna establish with the new FMFR organization. Which in hopefully three, four years will be housed in the brand new firehouse that's needed to serve this community. This, I hope, bringing some clarity to it regarding the organization's. Path forward. Uh, the Emergency Services Committee has been working with both communities. Federal Fire Rescue is in the process of being formally curated as a separate nonprofit, five oh one C three. The players in this are Lower Mullen Township, we are the driving factor, Bernathan Borough, Huntington Valley Fire Company, and BAFC. And a lot of people ask, well, what are we bringing to the table on this? As we said, we're doing ninety percent right now, projected for twenty twenty-six. You guys saw the splits for this year and what it was prior. Bernathan Borough, again, we've covered this in the last slide, Huntington Valley Fire Company. Uh, they are funded by the township, so bringing their assets, which are owned by the township, and their equipment, which is owned by the township. Same with the building space there. Bernathan Fire Company is a little bit different, um, they have a substantial operational savings where. Substantial fund that they're sitting on, approximately six million dollars that would be brought into this merger, hopefully. That would allow either offset cost of apparatus, the new building and so on, which they've already said that they were willing to bring to the table. So again, there's some huge factors here. The relief association Huntington Valley is minor, that is approximately a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. HVFC's uh, relief association is several million dollars, I believe pushing.
Commissioner, just to clarify, the first one you said, I think you meant Bernathans.
Bernathans is a hundred thousand, excuse me, a hundred, hundred and quarter somewhere in there. The relief associations are separate, the main things we're focusing on right now are the fire company and operational organizations, which are now operating under FMFR today. So the township and the borough are gonna be working together to make, make sense, giving the call volume proximity and to avoid redundant services and apparatus. With the ordering of the new engine that we just did, we will actually be reducing our fleet overall by one total net by twenty twenty-six, is that correct, Mark? Saving the taxpayers approximately a hundred some thousand, almost a million dollars in apparatus reduction. And hopefully, as we get under one roof, those savings will continue with the standardized purchase of equipment here and so on, so we have less duplication. Again, the staffing with the personnel, we need to do that to ensure the safety of our residents. That's where I'm at right here, does anybody on the board have any questions for me on this?
Uh, maybe this is for, for the chief. Have we gone through like a back of the envelope analysis on what similar townships that are using contracted fire services? And if, if we decided, you know, so it's really a comparison, you know, so if we didn't like the ninety-ten split because, hey, we don't think it's fair for some reason. Uh, for, you know, if we decide to move to a contractual model for Bernathan, how would that compare to like a ninety-ten split? Have we kind of done that back of the envelope comparison to say, hey? Cause that's really our other choice, our other choices, either way, we have to do this. Like, we're gonna move forward, but we can accept a ten percent. Or we could say, alright, we're gonna move to contractual services and we're gonna charge it as much.
Chief, do you mind if I start? So just, we, the original concept for all of us started with a meeting that we did with uh, Newtown Township. Their contract is ninety-ten. Um, I think a key point, and it's tough to do this conversation because things. Kind of go through a process and there's several reasons for the recommendations that we make. So. One of the bullet points that Commissioner Canali shared through the Emergency Services Committee, our last meeting, we focused on. How the new organization will be formed. And a major component of that being. Kind of a shift in my mindset from needing to be a municipal department from a control perspective. To embracing some of the flexibility that a nonprofit organization would allow for us. So having done that analysis across kind of every component of the organization. And nonprofit will, I think, put both communities in, in a more flexible position uh, to, to. Build out the new organization. When that is happening, there will be articles like incorporating the, the new nonprofit, there will be bylaws that are drafted, there will be definitions for how people get appointed onto the board of trustees. And throughout this entire process, we have tried to be very deliberate in protecting the township's interest, while always understanding. That we're building the same thing regardless of who is involved. So that it is always the fallback position that the township is responsible for a hundred percent of the cost. But I think the contract component becomes less relevant when it is a separate nonprofit that is being formed. Um, because the township as the greater funding entity should have. Greater number of seats on that board of trustees, therefore, the control mechanism is kind of inherently built in. To what has been built. Therefore, I think it simplifies a great component of this that we previously were having to try to figure out a way to deal with, which one of those was maybe. Align ourselves to kind of force this into a conversation around contractual services rather than. I think the nonprofit lends a better opportunity to it being a continued partnership on the same funding levels that. I think we're wrapping minds around that are, are going to be realistic for this project.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I do have a question for you, it's. Has to do with the comments around like call volumes rising, the, the amount of calls that we take, especially from an EMS perspective, outside of the township and the borough. And, you know, we're part of this mutual aid network, do. In your opinion, do you think like, so we, we're adding trucks, trying to keep up with call volume. Are other townships in the surrounding area putting the same amount of emphasis and investment in raising their fleet sizes and investing in people? Um, like, my, my question being like, are we picking up slack amongst of the, of the collection of? And, you know, is it, or is there, are other townships putting an effort in? It's just like, people are calling nine-one-one way more than they used to, or there's way more people than they used to be.
I think we're a smaller organization than the ones that surround us by quite a bit. Uh, so our real estate or our fleet uh, that we have is definitely a lot smaller than that. But as our call volume goes up, and, and the commissioner mentioned that we're putting the third ambulance on, it's not mainly to handle more calls. It's to be able to make sure we can maintain handling the calls we are, because our equipment breaks down. So we're trying to rotate those in to extend the life expectancy of the vehicles, less wear and tear on them, and then rotate them through as we go. Um, will we pick up more calls? Yeah, we're gonna pick up more calls, because the, the nature of the business is just taking it, it's just taking it up, it's bad.
That was, I think, a really interesting, good framing of that question though, where. Like, if we're disproportionately invested compared to our neighbors, and there is this frustrating regional component where there isn't any state or county better guidance to us. So if you choose to participate more, are we taxing Lower Mullen residents? Too much to participate more in like a regional system compared to just taking care of our own? But I, I think the chief's answer was spot on. So like, we can take more calls, so they give us, so we get more calls, so we get that, get more trucks, so.
Well, it's kind of a, a, a rotation, it's, it's bad, because one, as we're out taking more calls, then we gotta be covered up when our calls come in. So now somebody else is moving down here from another area.
Just to finish that thought, I think the chief's. Answer was the, the right one in that everything that we're doing as Lower Mullen is kind of always starting at a point that is well behind. The more formed, better funded, more durable, everything about our neighboring municipalities, that is the defining characteristic of everything it is that we need to try to improve upon. More than it is that we're disproportionately. Gaining and like, we're kind of just catching up to what we need to be in twenty twenty-five.
Can I just clarify for one second here, also, with that second truck going up. These guys are mostly all cross-trained firefighters and paramedic EMTs, providing dual service. The second truck that we put up is a dedicated truck to Lower Mullen Township. It is designated with a float status and will not be dispatched outside of the township for additional calls. If we're down to one paramedic truck at nighttime or something of that nature, it can be dispatched as a sixty, we're put up. As a float truck to limit it where it cannot leave the township unless there's a priority call.
But there are times when we. Go down to manpower is all committed, out of calls, and we have to recover.
Yes.
Someone's gotta commit. The fire end of things are probably gonna increase as we go forward too, not because of the same reasons, but. We're gonna be more engaged in the assistive medic box, so they're gonna be starting to run calls with that eventually, that's just the nature of everybody's business.
In nineteen ninety-nine, we averaged two point one calls per day, seven hundred calls per year. We're pushing twenty-seven hundred, I believe, this year on the EMS.
Twenty-five to twenty-six.
Somewhere in that range. So significant increase.
But we're only doing anywhere from forty-five hundred on fire calls. So, but again, like I said, things are changing. Uh, we just had an incident the other night, and one of the things I've talked to the chief about is start to run the fire engines on accident calls. So we can provide safety blocking for our personnel working, well, we just had a person run through a barricaded scene the other night. Got down as far as where we were working on this extrication, actually hit our ambulance, and it was a mess, luckily nobody got hurt.
I saw someone do that on Valor Road, like, just navigate through, like police cars.
Yeah.
And barricades and keep driving through, and I, I see people, they're like. Because it just, it was, it was very brazen, like. So I like, so yeah, I, I, I get that.
Number two fire deaths these days are emergency responders get hit by pedestrian vehicles at fires. It's crazy, and people just pay attention on their phones. Uh, what else they're doing, I couldn't tell you, I, I don't wanna get any specifics from the other night, but there's a lot of factors that come into play.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public?
Do you guys get any funding?
Come on up, Paul, just stage your name and address, please. Yeah, they need it for online.
Colburn, thirty-eight ninety-five Sheffield, do you guys get any money or anything when you go out to the other townships to follow them, or is it kind of like police departments, you just?
No, the ambulance bills for service.
Okay, to the people, or is it just like? You guys or?
If, if we go out and we do a transport, we bill for that service no matter where we're at. Now, the individual's responsible for that, they turn it into their insurance company. One thing we do have available here is if you have a membership to the Bernathan Fire Company ambulance subscription program. Then they take care of the reduction in fee for that.
But what about the fire trucks too? So it's everybody just covers?
Any other questions from the public? Thank you, Chief Showmaker.
Good job.
Alright, that takes me to my liaison positions. My first liaison position is civil service, I have no report there. The second one is an update on the library. The fairy tale trail is currently installed at the Lower Mullen Park, it was created by the team advisory board. You can read their story while you walk the paved trails. Installation will be taken down on May eighteenth. Saturday, May seventeenth, the library welcomes Ridiculous Nicholas to the community room at two P M. Interactive family comedy show includes some of the most ridiculous stunts and tricks. Like a matter for families with children's ages three and up. All children must be accompanied by an adult. Monday, May nineteenth, the library will be closed for the annual staff and service days. Speakers that share one blue P A autism dot org. Dementia friends in Rich Worthington to train staff on fire safety and emergency preparedness. Save the date, Saturday, August sixteenth, from noon to four P M. The library will hold the annual. The library will hold the annual fundraiser for the books, featuring a nine-hole indoor guide course, raffle baskets and snacks. It will be fun for the entire family. That's all I have. I do miss something here.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Canley and Canales, and for your presentation. Uh, next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Hausen, which is Chair of the Public Property Committee. Unfortunately, Ruth, well, Ruth is away. Um, prepare to take that, if not, I'll take it. Oh, I say email, I will take this then. Um, yeah. Ruth has her sanitary sewer monthly report. Um, does anyone have any questions regarding the report?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Uh, she did report to me that there was no hard meeting, and there was no authority meeting. Um, but she did um, meet uh, monthly for uh, sewer meeting, or quarterly meeting uh, with the manager Hoffman and staff. So, and her liaison report is the same. So that's it. That would conclude Commissioner Hausen's agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any questions before I close? Okay, that's it. Now we'll open up for public participation on non-agenda items. Would anybody like to address the board? No one in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, motion adjourned. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
Motion to remove the second in the chair.
Alright, alright.
Thank you.